Councilwoman.
Councilwoman entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Move, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did everyone say aye?
Yes.
Okay. All ayes most carried for the record, councilmember Mylam and councilmember Borton joined us. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you for waiting for us. We apologize for getting started late, but welcome to our city council meeting. For the record, it is Tuesday, March 17th. It's 6:17. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylam.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Here.
Councilmember Zaramba.
Here.
Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance will be led tonight by troop 285. They are with Green Valley Ward, and we have Dylan Haycock that is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Dylan, if you'll come forward and I'll ask you all to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as one.
Dylan, if I could invite you forward, I have a City of Meridian fan to take you forward. Okay, item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Steve Moore. Pastor Moore is with Ten Mile Christian Church, so I will ask you to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Pastor Moore, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, day like this, we, it's so easy to take for granted our health and the beauty of our world, we thank you for that. God, just walking into this room tonight and seeing those scouts and seeing the Mountain View girls' basketball team just does my heart good to think about the influence of this wonderful city of ours. And again, God, we don't want to take that for granted. We ask your continued blessing on the way we live, but specifically tonight, I ask for you to give wisdom to this council and to our mayor and the city officials, the servants. We are grateful for the time that they commit. There's decisions that they're going to make tonight that affect lives in all kinds of ways, and we are grateful that we have your presence. We are mindful that we're not only one nation under you, God, but this city is under you as well, and we humbly acknowledge what it means to have a Creator, God, present in our individual lives. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Moore. Number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
Item six L has been asked to be continued until March 24th in order to get the agreements completely executed. On item nine A, the resolution number is 15-1056. On item nine F, the resolution number is 15-1057. With those additions, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes most carried. Okay, item number five is a proclamation. The first one is for the March for Meals, and I'm going to move down to the podium. If I could have those that will be receiving the proclamation, please join me. I'm going to read this proclamation and then I'll kind of turn the mic over for comments on the success of the event this last weekend, and, but first, let me read the proclamation. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into a law, a measure, that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Whereas Meals on Wheels America established a National March for Wheels, for Meals campaign in March of 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act nutrition programs, and to raise awareness about the escalating problem for, of senior hunger in America. Whereas the Metro Meals on Wheels program has served Meridian and communities throughout Ada County for more than 40 years, and whereas volunteer drivers are the backbone of the program, and not only do they deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas Metro Wheels on, Mills on Wheels, Wheels on Mills, yeah, provides nutritious meals to seniors throughout Ada County and helps them maintain their health and independence. Whereas Metro Meals on Wheels provides a powerful socialization opportunity for seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Therefore, I, Tammy DeVere, of the City of Meridian, do hereby proclaim March for Meals Month in the City of Meridian and urge our citizens in the City of Meridian to take this month to honor our local Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and certainly the volunteers that are an integral part of this important program to our community. So I will turn this over to Grant Jones, and thank you for your involvement and for what you do in our community for our seniors that are homebound. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk and City Council, for letting me come here tonight. We do make a big difference among seniors in Meridian. We serve about 80 homebound folks in Meridian every weekday, and then at the beautiful new senior center, we serve over 100 meals every weekday to seniors in Meridian. So Meals on Wheels does a lot in Meridian. We're so grateful for this proclamation. We had a great event here in Meridian at Kleiner Park on Saturday, and everybody needs to know, we had the largest March for Meals event in the country in Meridian on Saturday. Four hundred folks from across the area came to march for meals and raise awareness about senior nutrition, so thank you so very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
I think councilmember Mylam went to the event, did you not?
No, it's not.
No?
I wanted to go.
I'm sure she wanted to be there, huh? Okay, now I'll ask the girls to come on and join me up here at the podium as I read the proclamation. Now, I'll say the Mountain View girls' basketball team has dressed for the occasion of, you know, St. Patrick's Day, they have their green on. Grant, I noticed that you didn't. I didn't pinch you, so, there you go.
I had green on.
Okay, and so, we always enjoy the opportunity to recognize our student athletes when they accomplish big things, and just want you all to know how proud we are of this accomplishment. It's a, it's a big deal, and so, this is our opportunity to recognize you for your dedication, your hard work, and the championship that you brought home. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas being an athlete is more than training to excel in sports. Whereas being an athlete is more than training to excel in sports or to be physically fit. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience, all traits that are needed to succeed on the court, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the Mountain View Girls Basketball Team overall record for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen season was twenty-six wins and one loss. And whereas their hard work and teamwork resulted in recently winning the twenty fifteen state championship tournament for basketball. And whereas the capturing of the state title builds school spirit and allows these student athletes to walk the halls of Mountain View with a little extra swagger. Whereas the leadership training and discipline of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents and passion to become a winning team, with each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I Mayor Tammy Deverde do hereby proclaim March seventeen as Mountain View High School State Championship Day here in the City of Meridian and call upon the community to please join me in congratulating the Lady Mavs on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly at the state tournament. And please join me in congratulating these young ladies. This proclamation, the official one has each of the names, and those will be in the record for our city, so you can look it up at any time. And I did sign a, a copy for each of you, and I will give this to your coach. And as she makes some remarks and maybe some introductions, I will present you a City of Meridian pin.
Thank you Mayor Deverde and Councilman. We really appreciate this award. It was, I'm pretty proud of these girls. They stepped up all year long and played extremely well, and they really came through at the state tournament, set a couple of records. You know, we created a little history there over at Mountain View, first girl state champions in basketball. So hopefully we can continue that type of program over at Mountain View, which I'm sure we will. But let me introduce each one of these girls. Destiny Slocum and Daily Carrillo, Audrey Perry, Kayla Anderson, Debrae Villarreal, Kaylee Olson, Adriana Vickery, Alyssa Case, and Drew Pikes. We're missing a few of them. They couldn't be here tonight, but they were, sorry they couldn't make it. But thank you again. Thank you again.
I think those are our favorite times is being able to recognize the, the youth in our community and, and their achievements. So it's certainly our honor to be able to have done that. And having played basketball in high school, I, I know the hard work. I don't know the victory, but I do know the hard work. Okay, item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
With the movement of item six L to next week's meeting, I move that we approve the consent agenda, authorizing the clerk to attest and the mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zeremba.
Aye. All eyes must carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. We'll move to item eight under action items. Our first one is eight A, FP fifteen dash zero zero six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a final plat. This site consists of five point three four acres of land. It's currently zoned R fifteen and is located at the northeast corner of East Fairview Avenue and North Hickory Way. The final plat consists of fifty-one single-family residential building lots and six common lots on five point three four acres in the R fifteen district. The proposed plat is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat. Written testimony has been received from Jim Conger, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed final plat.
Thank you, council. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
Does the applicant have any comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve FP fifteen dash oh oh six and include staff and applicant comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item eight A. If there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zeremba.
Aye.
All eyes must carried. Item eight B and C, our public hearings continued from March third on AZ fourteen dash zero one four and CUP fourteen dash zero one nine. I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. The next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a conditional use permit. This site consists of eight point four nine acres of land. It's currently zoned R one in Ada County and is located at the southwest corner of North Black Cat Road and West Cherry Lane. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of nine point seven six acres of land with an R eight zoning district, consistent with the future land use map designation of medium density residential for this site. A conditional use permit is also requested for a church use in the R eight zoning district. There are two existing homes on this site that are proposed to be removed. The existing outbuildings are proposed to remain as accessory structures for the church to be used for storage of maintenance equipment. Those structures are here along the southern boundary of the site. The site plan was submitted as shown that depicts the proposed project developing in two phases. The first phase will consist of a twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square foot church facility, which will include a centralized foyer and main worship space, administrative office, nursery room, meeting rooms, and fellowship gathering hall. There will also be an unfinished gymnasium, kitchen, and meeting rooms. The second phase will include a five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three square foot addition to the south side of the building. That's shown here in the lighter area. ACHD is requiring additional right-of-way to be dedicated for the Black Cat Cherry Lane intersection project. There is an existing access via Cherry Lane that is proposed to be removed and relocated to the west property line right here for shared access with the property to the west. There are two existing accesses via Black Cat. The northern access is proposed to be shifted to align with West Thorn Creek Street on the east side of Black Cat. And the southern access is proposed to be removed. A minimum twenty-five foot wide landscape street buffer and five foot wide detached sidewalk is required along Black Cat Road and Cherry Lane. An internal parking lot landscaping is proposed as shown on the landscape plan. A ten foot wide multi-use regional pathway is required along the southern boundary of the site adjacent to the Ten Mile Creek. Landscaping and ballard lighting is required along the pathway in accord with UDC standards. Building elevations were submitted as shown for the future church building. Building materials are proposed to consist primarily of stucco with stone veneer wainscote. As a provision of annexation, staff is recommending a development agreement is required to tie future development of this site to the terms in the staff report. The commission did recommend approval of the subject applications. There were ten folks testified in favor of the application. They are as listed on your hearing outline. Eighteen people also signed up in favor of the application as listed. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Randy Haverfield, the applicant's representative, in agreement with the staff report. There were no key issues of discussion by the commission and no changes to the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions Mayor and council may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
Were there any improvements proposed for the outbuildings that are going to remain? I don't know their condition or the, in a presentable condition at this point. It's a rather old site, so.
Councilwoman Roundtree, not that I'm aware of, but the applicant is here tonight so they could answer that question. I did ask them to screen those buildings, though, in the staff report with fencing and landscaping.
Okay. And is, is there a floodplain issue on the, on the south of the property? Is there drainage through there?
There is a drainage along the southern boundary. There is a portion of it along that boundary that is within the Meridian Floodplain Overlaying District.
But no developments proposed in that?
No development is proposed on that end.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? Oh, I forgot to turn the podium around. So we'll, we'll have someone turn that around for you. You probably wondered how you were going to do that, right?
No.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Paul Struck, nine five four two, West Bronze Drive, Boise, Idaho.
Okay, you want to pull that mic a little closer to you?
Uh huh.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm church member. We, we planning to build this church. And I'm, I, I'm not clear what question was.
I, I got an answer to my question.
Oh, you got?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, if you have any-
Well, I guess I didn't. My question was, do you plan on doing any improvements to the outbuildings that remain on site?
Maybe not, not now, but later.
I don't, I don't know their condition. I just asked.
Yeah, of course.
Do you have any information you want to share with the city council about the project or?
About project to?
Are, are you, are you the applicant?
I'm just church member, and we work with Randy. This is our architect.
Okay, and Randy isn't here this evening.
He not here. He has-
He kind of threw you out in front of us, huh?
No, he called me and he said that he has meeting in Nampa City Hall today, and he not able to be today. He said that I had to be here. If you have any question, what I know, I can-
I have none.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any at this time.
Yeah.
So I imagine since you are one of the church members and standing in front of us that you are in favor of this application.
Of course.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had several people that did sign up in favor of that. We saw from the minutes of the planning and zoning that there's considerable support from the church members. Can you raise your hands if you're in favor of this application? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Does anyone want to provide testimony on this application?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
If you'll please state your name.
I am Vasili Shabura. My address, Torrevan twenty-seven, North Boulder Creek, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
We appreciate for this moment. We wait couple years and we have opportunity to build this church and we hope everything through and make this building. And we love this city, we love America, and we very appreciate for you, for give for us chance, build church in this country.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here and thank you for your testimony.
I am pastor of this church.
I, I assume so. And you're speaking in favor, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Seeing none, I move we close the public hearings on AZ fourteen dash oh one four and CUP fourteen dash oh one nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on items eight B and C. All those in favor say aye.
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 All eyes must carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve AZ fourteen dash oh one four and to include all staff and applicant comment, and that is to include a DA will be required for future development on this annexation.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item eight B as noted. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Obstand.
Councilmembers Zeremba.
Aye.
All eyes with one abstention. Item eight C.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve CUP fourteen dash oh one nine and include all applicant and staff comments.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item eight C. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Obstand.
Councilmembers Zeremba.
Aye.
I have all eyes and one that is abstained. Item eight D and E, our public hearings on AZ fifteen dash zero zero one and PP fifteen dash zero zero one. I will open these two public hearings with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, council, the next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of five point one four acres of land. It's currently zoned RUT in Ada County and is located at three nine eight South Locust Grove Road on the east side of Locust Grove, south of Franklin Road. The subject property, little history on it, was split in two thousand and three without approval from the Ada County Development Services. The subject application includes both of these properties that were part of the split and is therefore considered a parcel for development. The application before you is a request for annexation and zoning of five point one nine acres of land with an R fifteen zoning district, consistent with the mixed-use commercial future land use map designation. A preliminary plat is proposed as shown that consists of nine building lots, two common lots, and one other lot on five point one four acres of land in a proposed R fifteen district. No development is proposed at this time on Lot Five Block Two. That is the large lot here at the right-hand side. A conceptual development plan was submitted for this area showing how this lot may possibly develop in the future as shown. The gross density for the subdivision excluding Lot Five, the large lot, is four point two one dwelling units per acre with a net density of eight point one one dwelling units per acre. There is an existing home and outbuildings on the western two point one four acre parcel that is right in here. The home is proposed to remain on a lot in the subdivision. The outbuildings are proposed to be removed. The existing home is required to hook up to city water and sewer service within sixty days of services being available. A portion of the site along the east property boundary lies within the Meridian Floodplain Overlay District, which requires a floodplain permit application to be submitted prior to any development occurring in that overlay district. Access is proposed to the site via East Kalispell Street, an existing stub street at the west boundary of the site via Locust Grove Road that is shown here along the north boundary. A Snoopy turnaround is proposed at the south boundary of the site, which may extend to the east with future development. A 25-foot-wide landscaped street buffer is required along South Locust Grove Road on the common lot where the emergency access is proposed. Open space is proposed in accord with UDC standards. One-site amenity is required to be provided with this development. The pathway's master plan depicts a segment of the city's regional pathway on this site along the east side of the Five Mile Creek. Those run right through there. The pathway master plan depicts the segment of the city's regional pathway on this side along the east side of the creek and an easement for the pathway is required at this time. However, construction of the pathway is not required until the eastern portion of the site develops in the future. Three pictures of typical sample elevations were submitted as shown for the development. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Ben Test, Ben Thomas testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Ben Thomas, the applicant's representative, submitted written testimony on this application. A key issue that was discussed by the commission was the preference for pavement rather than gravel for the emergency access road via Locust Grove for maintenance purposes. And that is this road shown within this common lot right here. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation and there are no outstanding issues. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from Stephen Yearsley. He requests the emergency access road along the south boundary of the site is paved rather than gravel for a pathway amenity with breakaway bollards to prevent vehicular use at the ends of the pathway. Ben Thomas, the applicant's representative, submitted written testimony also. He requests condition number 2.1.1, which requires the water system to be looped to the existing main in Locust Grove via an extension through Lot 1, Block 1, to be modified to not require an extension of the water line through Lot 1 and dedicate an easement to the city instead for construction and maintenance of a water main in the future if needed. Staff will stand for any questions Mayor and Council may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
The preliminary plat does not include that portion to the east?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Roundtree, it does include it. This is one large lot, the boundary you see here. And then the applicant has submitted a concept plan for that area and it is shown right here.
I don't see an easement identified there for the pathway.
There isn't one. It's conditioned in the staff report.
So, it will show up on the final plat?
It may show up on the final plat, but the pathway, the Parks Department is requiring a separate easement to be recorded for multi-use pathways, which will come before you for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Is the, the emergency pathway is required?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, Councilwoman, the emergency access is required by the fire department. It is within this lot right here, which is Lot 1. The fire department is okay with it being gravel as long as it meets their requirements. It was simply a suggestion by Stephen Yearsley that they pave it.
Okay, and Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
This may be a question for the applicant, but who is it contemplated to maintain it?
The homeowners association, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, anything further from council?
At this point.
Would the applicant like to make comment? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Ben Thomas. My mailing address is PO Box 170811, Boise, Idaho, 83717. I'm here representing the applicant this evening. I think Sonia's accurately described our proposal here and it's fairly straightforward, but I will stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, council, any questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zaramba.
Not necessarily for, for the applicant, but while the applicant is here, I would like to ask the Public Works Department to comment on the request not to loop the water system.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Zaramba. I spoke to Kyle Radick this afternoon and the, the reason that that requirement was put in was for redundancy and to loop the water system to avoid a dead-end line in that sub.
Okay, Mr. Borton.
Thank you. Can you tell me the, the discussion with regards to that emergency pathway being paved versus gravel? Maintenance costs and, and fear that it could become easily ignored by an HOA full of weeds, et cetera?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton. My client, the applicant, wishes to have it gravel for cost purposes only. That's all I can tell you. I mean, the HOA will have to maintain it one way or another. It's probably cheaper to maintain gravel than asphalt in the long run. But that was his wish, so that's, that's why we're here this evening. I would like to address the water situation if I could quickly. I know that the city, the staff and the city council, actually, I've seen other projects come through here with only one water source. I know that that DEQ recommendations are for a looped water system, but that, that seems to have been overlooked in many other developments in the city, so I'd ask that that be done here. Like I said, we'd be happy to provide the easement so that if the water line was ever necessary in the, in the future, another developer needed it or the city wanted to install it, they'd be free to do that. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I had two people sign up on the public hearing sheet. If when I call your name you would like to provide testimony, I would invite you forward at that time. And if I say your name wrong, I apologize in advance. Rod Collop? Yes. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Rod Collop, 1821 East Franklin Road.
Thank you.
We have the, our Rockin Ranch, which is just according to the, be the north of this. This concern that I have is this is an extension off the subdivision that's already being built right now with the houses. And I came to meetings previously to this and they were required to put a fence on the backside of our property to keep kids from coming in because we have horses and stallions in there. And it was a requirement from city council for them to do that, and they've never done that yet. So, yeah, and I had a meeting with them when they proposed this and the gentleman that I talked to said that they didn't need to do it. So, I wanted to make sure I attended this meeting so that you guys could be aware of the situation, that they need to finish up on that part of it. So, that's my biggest concern.
I could understand that. Thank you for sharing that. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
And, and Shirley? Collop?
She's okay. She's, she's good.
She signed up also. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item? Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Danny Zhu. My address is 1681 East Belalooka Lane, in Meridian.
Thank you.
And we are actually a current residence in this Belalooka subdivision. So, so we are, I don't know if I can point that. So...
We can have someone help you, show, show you how to use the system there.
So, this is my house. So, I just became the owner of the residence. And then, so, and then we heard about this new development of the Belalooka East subdivision, which is connect to our current subdivision. And after talking to my neighbors, especially along the south side of the subdivision, because our backyard is directly connect to the emergency access road, so we have some concerns. Our first concern is that what, what is the long-term plan for the emergency access road, especially after this large lot has been developed? Is it going to be turned into a, a formal traffic road for direct access to the large lot from here? So, currently we support the use of this private easement as emergency access road, either gravel or paved road, but because there are vegetations along the fence on both sides of the road, we prefer to, to keep the vegetations if we're going to turn this gravel road to a paved road. And also, once, if we're going to pave the road, are we going to put a sign over here at the entrance from the major road, which is the south Locust Grove, to show the people this is the emergency access only? So that people is not, are not going to miss, mistaking that this is going to be access, you know, the access entrance to the rest of the subdivision. So, the entrance, current entrance is right here. So, these are our concerns and questions. I hope the city and developer will be able to answer those concerns.
We appreciate your testimony. Any questions from council? Thank you, Caleb. Any additional testimony? Would the applicant like to come, come up and answer the, the questions that were raised in the public testimony?
Madam Mayor, council members.
If you'll just restate your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Ben Thomas, PO Box 170811, Boise.
Thank you.
In regards to the second gentleman's questions about the emergency access road, that will be dedicated to the homeowners association, so it will not be made a public road. There will be bollards at both ends of that, both on Locust Grove and on the, at the Snoopy turnaround there. So, nobody could actually drive down that without having the keys to remove those bollards, so I don't ever anticipate any vehicle traffic on that, on that emergency access road. As far as Mr. Collop's fence, I wasn't involved in the project that was originally done in 2006 for the Belalook subdivision. I've never met Mr. Collop. I don't, I don't know anything about a fence being proposed there, so I really can't address it, other than I can say that that property is really not attached to this development application, so not particularly germane to why we're here this evening. Thank you.
So, he's not the same developer that developed the front part of it?
He is indeed. I just wasn't involved in it, so I, I don't know anything about it.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Caleb just told me that he believes that Mr. Collop actually lives up in this area and may be getting this project confused with this property, perhaps?
No. So, perhaps we can have you come forward and, and point it, point it out. So, is it, is it this lot just to the, the upper end of the orange area?
Okay, my property comes all the way down to here and butts up right against this. When they did this original...
Sir, can you select the color at the top, please?
Okay, my property, let's see, comes right down here, butts up against this fence here. And when they originally did this property here, I came to the meeting, all the meetings that they had on it, and the city council at that time had told them that they were required to put an iron, wrought iron fence to keep the kids out right through this section here. And I've been waiting for that to be done and it's never been completed. And I've talked to a number of different people up on the projects through the years. They kept telling me, oh, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. So, this gentleman that I was just talking to, I've never met, never had anything to do with, but the other gentleman that left earlier that was in here, I had a discussion with this when we got this in the mail. And he told me at that time that they didn't have to do it. And I explained to him, yes, I came to the meetings, that was part of the initial deal that had to be the wrought iron fence to keep the kids out of there. This is an extension off that same subdivision, so that's why I'm here. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will look into that.
That, that would be good. Well, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Sonia, do we have a DA on that original?
On this property?
Yeah.
Or the, the...
The original, the one that would have made the fence and stuff when we...
I am not sure, but I will look into it, Councilwoman Byrd.
We need to make sure we get DA's on all these, any from here on out.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, I got a question for, for Chief Neimeyer concerning the emergency access. It's a relatively small project, few number of homes, and a relatively long emergency access, which I presume is required from a public safety perspective. It couldn't go forward without that access. You would need to use it if there's an issue. And with that, looking at the staff report, there's reference to it being, needing to be 20 feet wide, capable of supporting a load of 75,000 pounds. And my concern is once a project like this is done, for an HOA to perpetually maintain gravel surface that can sustain what you need, without any strings down the road to require them to expend funds to make sure that needed emergency access is maintained, I'm not certain, aside from the visual spite strip potential it, it has as gravel, I'm not certain the need to address the public safety requirements are met under these unique circumstances if it's a gravel service versus paved. So, give me your thoughts on, on truly what you're most comfortable with.
As I talked to Chief Palmer earlier today about this, the, the issue sometimes with gravel is if you have a lot of traffic on it, you develop potholes, you develop a breakdown, essentially, of that gravel roadway. With this having bollards, you wouldn't see that breakdown. Therefore, we, we do work with applicants. Obviously, our preference is paved, but the gravel in this situation, because it's blocked and not receiving a lot of traffic, Chief Palmer wasn't as worried about the breakdown of the roadway that we would be driving on to maintain the weight restrictions that we have. So, I don't know if I can answer your question exactly. Our preference would be paved because we know that's going to last. It's easier to maintain from a maintenance standpoint, but gravel is an option under the code.
Counsel, any more questions?
Madam Mayor. To the looping of the water system, I, I, there are many reasons for the request to have them do that and connect it to the main. To me, it doesn't serve the necessary purposes to not finish that line, not finish that loop. Granting an easement to the city doesn't do any good because it's the developer that needs to pay for putting the water line in, and an easement doesn't accomplish that. My opinion is that we need to leave that condition as originally requested, that the water line be looped. My opinion is that we need to leave that condition as originally requested, that the water line be looped.
Thank you. From council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
A question for staff. Looking at the report, there's reference, because it's just over a five-acre parcel. And maybe if I'm reading this right, the proposed pathway along the Five Mile Creek to the east is the amenity that would go when that parcel develops. But then there's a reference that says, "Staff recommends another amenity provided by the applicant with development of the western portion." What is that amenity?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman Borton, I believe it was a picnic table or something, I'm looking.
The reason I ask that question is whether or not, to Mr. Yearsley's letter, making this emergency access serve as a, were it to be paved as a potential amenity in lieu of what might have been proposed, if that was a part of the discussion? Or if it's even eligible?
It would count as an amenity, the pathway. The applicant was just not interested in doing that. They did propose, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it, they did propose an amenity to be placed in the first Bella Brook here within the common area, to be placed offsite within that area. Just trying to find what it was they were proposing. I guess the staff report says that they need to provide one amenity. I think that they said at the hearing...
That it was a picnic table?
Yes, he's nodding, thank you.
So he's suggesting a picnic table on the first phase of this?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
That he has no responsibility for.
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay. And I would ask Mr. Thomas if that's correct, if you'll please come up to the podium. So you just told us that you didn't have anything to do with this other phase, but one of the amenities is gonna be placed on that.
Madam Mayor, we simply proposed to put the amenity up there because there is a paved pathway that leads from the end of the Bella Brook sub all the way down to the Five Mile Creek. We thought it was a good place. It's landscaped, there are sprinklers, it's a pretty desirable place. We could certainly make room for an amenity on the western portion of this development. It just didn't make as much sense to us.
I don't know if the placement of the picnic tables in question, but certainly the fencing question is then brought up too. And that is a concern. When requirements are placed on these developments, we do take the word of the developer that that is gonna happen. And when we get a neighbor that comes and says it hasn't, and he hasn't been able to get any answers, that's concerning.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I understand that. I will point out that the area adjacent to Mr. Cullip's property is the Five Mile Creek. The irrigation district has an easement there. I'm not even sure that we can put a fence there, to be perfectly honest. And to answer our previous questions, yes, there is a development agreement in place for this, for the old Bella Brook subdivision, so I assume that's still enforceable. If that was required at that time, it's gonna be in that development agreement.
Council, any additional questions here?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
In regards to development agreement, I think he's correct. There is one on the original Bella Brook. But I think what Mr. Cullip's talking about was when they did the rezone to add multifamily. You had a lengthy discussion about the amenities related to the multifamily, and that's when the fence issue became part of it. And they didn't request to modify the development agreement. So it's just in the findings. It's not in the development agreement itself because I don't recall that we did a re, we didn't do a new development agreement or an amended at that time because that was a new issue. But, and they had never requested that change. So they had just committed to putting it in in relation to that most recent rezone, which I think was last year.
Madam Mayor, I just found an amended development agreement was required in 2013, I believe. It did require compliance with the landscape plan that was submitted with the application. And I'm not sure what the landscape plan shows. I would have to look at that. But the conditions of approval said that they could leave the existing fence along the north boundary of the site that was the property of the adjacent, I think it's a church's property, and that additional fencing should be constructed around the perimeter of the common area to be six-foot open vision, is what it said. It did not specify wrought iron, but it was supposed to be fenced all the way.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, but that wasn't in front of this council. They weren't here in 2013. This was a subsequent hearing that Mr. Cullip was at because it was in front of this council, and the six of them weren't here in 2013. And it wasn't that long ago. I mean, the whole discussion was over the common area. They wanted to put in, I think, a picnic table, and the discussion was a tot lot. They said the park was close enough. The discussion was, we have a lot of kids in apartment complexes and multifamily, so that was the nature of the discussion. That's when Mr. Cullip was here about his horses. So that was in front of this council, so that had to be after 13. And I don't find an amended development agreement subsequent to the one in 13. So that's the concern I have, is I don't know, it's just in the findings that were granted for the CUP, I believe, for the multifamily. So if the council wants, we maybe need a week to clear up what exactly we can do to make sure that it is getting carried out before we approve the next step.
I think that's reasonable. Caleb?
And Madam Mayor, I think we can do that. I think now Mr. Neri may be getting the multifamily project confused because Mr. Cullip was here just this last year testifying on the R-15 and the amenities. And we did table that out for them to work out that tot lot because that was a 55 and over. But I think we need to do a little more research because this Bella Brook project does have some history dating back to 2006, 2007. I believe that original plat expired. So when it came back in '12 or '13, as Sonia was reading some of those conditions, I'm not sure that all the original conditions, like fencing, followed that new project through because, again, that expired, the original Bella Brook, and came back in. So a week, just so we're all on the same page and have all that research done. But I think that's probably what happened, so.
Pierce, we do need that clarity, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I would move if we continue these public hearings, AZ 15-001 and PP 15-001 to April 7, 2015.
Wait, Madam Mayor, sorry.
Give it that long? So your motion?
My motion changed to the March 24, 2015. Let's get this straightened out and make sure that they've lived up to the DA's modified and everything. And if they haven't, then we can work on it at that point.
Do I have a motion to that long, or a second to that long motion?
And comment if I may, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zaromba.
As long as we're studying things, I'd like some further thought put on the multi-use pathway. When the other piece of this project came to us, we did require them to complete down to what will connect to that pathway, that long narrow strip that has a pathway in it. Normally, we expect the developer to put that pathway in when they're building. And I guess I'm just asking to put some thought that developers are suggesting that they not do it now, and I thought our requirement was that they have to do it now.
Do you like me to clarify?
Add that to the extra thought, unless you have the answer now.
I have the answer.
At this point, I just want to continue, or we have a motion and a second, to continue this.
Yes, but they need to know the reason for us continuing it. They have things that we're asking them to do.
Right. It's weird having this part of a motion as a discussion, but let's vote on the motion to continue, and then we'll be clear on what information we want to be brought back.
That works for me.
So all those in favor of continuing items A, D, and E to next Tuesday, the 24th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes. Now, in terms of clarity, Sonia, if you want to make comment on the pathway aspect.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Zaromba. I did clarify that issue with Jay Gibbons in the Parks Department, and he told me twice, in fact, we talked about it twice, that he only needed the easement at this point so that the city could go in and finish the pathway at some point if it connected on both ends. But he did not feel that the applicant needed to construct it at this point.
So, Madam Mayor, would that become a requirement when they develop Lot 5? Is that the big lot that they're not including in this, Lot 5?
We could certainly make it a requirement. It is part of the plat, so you could include that requirement if you'd like.
Okay. Later with Lot 5.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I hope the applicant is clear on what we need back, particularly in terms of the fencing aspect that the staff will work on, what that requirement was. Any remaining questions about the pathway aspect and the amenity? Anything further? Okay, items 8F and G are public hearing on AZ 14-016 and PP 14-018. I will open these two public hearings with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are requests for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. The annexation area for this site is shown here on your left on the screen. It consists of 27.75 acres of land. It's currently zoned RUT in Ada County and is located at 4617 and 4620 South Martinal Lane and 3570 East Amity Road. The property's, a little history here, the property's at the southwest corner and the northeast corner of the site are existing lots in Martinal subdivision. The property at the southeast corner of the site received a conditional use permit in Ada County to operate an assisted living facility. This property is currently receiving city water service. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 27.75 acres of land with an R8 zoning district consistent with the medium-density residential future land use map designation for this site. The property at the southeast corner of the site will remain an assisted living facility. The property at the southwest corner of the site is proposed to be subdivided. And the property at the northeast corner of the site will remain a rural residential property until redeveloped in the future. So as you can see here on the map on your right, this is the only area of the annexation area that is proposed to be platted at this time. A conceptual development plan, there's an aerial view of the property that shows the existing homes. A conceptual development plan is proposed that shows how the rural residential property, which is this one here at the northeast corner, may redevelop in the future through a separate preliminary plat. This plan has been revised since the commission hearing. The new one is here on your right. The previous plan is shown on the left. The revised plan no longer has private streets, and the stub street has shifted further to the west, and the lots reconfigured accordingly. So again, this is the only portion that's proposed to be platted. This is a concept plan on the rural residential piece. This is the revised concept plan. They've shifted this road here to the west, and it's no longer, this was a private street back in here, and this is all public now. The proposed preliminary plat consists of 31 single-family residential building lots, which includes a lot for the existing home, and seven common lots on 10.37 acres of land in an R8 zoning district. The gross density for the subdivision is 2.99 dwelling units per acre with an average lot size of 6,926 square feet. This large lot is here for the existing home. Access is proposed via South Martinal Avenue, a local street, via East Amity Road. Private streets were originally proposed internally for access with a gated entrance off of Martinal Avenue. However, the applicant did tell me this afternoon that they now intend to provide these as public streets. Martinal Avenue stubs to the north property boundary for future extension. Public street frontage is provided to the assisted living facility at the southeast corner of the site. That's this area here. A cross-access easement is required to be provided to the Luke Out parcel, which is right here at the southwest corner of the site, for access to the public street here. ACHD is requiring additional right-of-way to be dedicated along Eagle Road, and the pavement widened along Eagle and Amity Roads. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Eagle and Amity Roads with a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk. A minimum of 10% or 1.03 acres of qualified open space and one-site amenity is required to be provided within the development. A five-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence is proposed to be constructed by the developer around the perimeter of the subdivision. Three pictures of typical sample building elevations for future homes in this development, as well as the future development to the north, were submitted by the applicant, as shown. The commission did recommend denial on this application, actually, both of these applications, annexation and preliminary plat. At the hearing, Tamara Thompson, the applicant's representative, and Sandy Sanderson, the developer, testified in favor. Scott Shaw, Dan Luke, Roger Taylor, and Frank Shoemaker all testified in opposition. Randy Clarno and Bradford Dedman commented on the application, and written testimony was received from Philip and Judy DiAngeli, Roger and Teresa Taylor, Louis Uranga on behalf of Frank and Sue Shoemaker, and Tamara Thompson, the applicant's representative. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows. Inclusion of the northern portion of the property in order to be contiguous to annex and develop the southern portion of the site in the city, i.e. leapfrog and not orderly development. The private streets within the development not being wide enough to allow on-street parking and the financial burden on the homeowners to maintain the private streets. The location of the stub street to the north overcrowding in the West Ada School District. The provision of larger lots along the northern boundary of the development as a transition to larger rural residential properties. And provision of a pathway within the common lot along the northern boundary of the site for pedestrian access to the future high school to the east. The commission did recommend denial, as I stated, of this application based on their determination that it was a leapfrog development and not an orderly expansion of the city limits and services. The location of the stub street to the north and the impact on the schools. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from Randy Clarno. He submitted a letter stating he is in support of the revised concept plan. He is representing the, I believe, the property owners to the north up here. Outstanding issues for the council, because the concept plan has changed significantly since the commission hearing, staff recommends the council either remand the applications back to the commission for a recommendation on the revised plan, or if council deems the revised plan is acceptable, the applications are continued for a couple of weeks in order for staff to prepare a revised staff report based on the revised plan. Staff will stand for any questions Mayor and council may have.
Thank you, Sonia. Council, any questions at this point? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your... If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the Land Group, 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle, Idaho.
Thank you.
With me tonight, I have Gary Allen with Gibbons Persley and Jason Dunsborough, also with the Land Group. Since the planning and zoning hearing, many of the issues have been resolved. Sonia's done such a great job of going through the staff report. I won't reiterate everything, but I'll touch on a couple of key points. A new concept plan was submitted as a result of coordination with the neighbor to the north. That developer is Mr. Clarno. He submitted a letter or an email in support of the revised plan with the new stub street location, and he's also supportive of the landscape buffer that we're providing for the transition to the lots to the north. Mr. Clarno is also here tonight, should you wish to hear from him. The overcrowding of the West Ada School District was another item that came up. The good news is, is that the school bond passed last week, so that issue or that bond should help alleviate those overcrowding problems. The proposal to develop the portion closer to the entrance is consistent with all residential subdivisions. We have one access point to this property, and it's from Amity. And the Phase 1 that we're proposing is adjacent to our single access point. We have emergency access point onto Eagle Road, but as far as just the main access point, which is standard for subdivision, for any development actually, that you develop out the main entrance point, and then the lots closest to that, and then as you move back with phases, then those are additional phases. This one was not submitted. The northern portion wasn't submitted at the same time because there were a lot of moving parts on that north piece. We had the stub street in one location at one time, and when we had our neighborhood meeting, the neighbors to the north asked us to move it. We moved it, and that's the result of the original application. And then the properties to the north went under contract with a developer, and he wanted it moved someplace else. And so, we've been kind of going through a bunch of different reiterations, and since we knew the southern portion was fairly locked in and we controlled what we had there, then we went forward with that as our first phase. But you will see a preliminary plat for the northern portion. It's just not submitted with right now. The private versus public streets was something that came up in the public hearing, and we believe the private streets are important for the livability and the vision, the feel of what this developer is looking for and to create with this subdivision. The private gated community offers a greater sense of privacy and security. It gives the neighbors a little sense of their own little community. We understand that if the city doesn't feel that that is appropriate, we are fine either way. If you would like us to go to public streets, we will go that way. That's fine. We don't want that to be a reason for denial, but it's not the vision and the feel that this developer's looking for for this subdivision. With respect to the staff report, we've read the staff report and agree with the conditions of approval with a couple of modifications. Sections or specific conditions, 1.1, 1.2 F and 1.1, 1.3 G are both dealing with the same access to, or pedestrian connectivity to Eagle Road, and we will provide connectivity to Eagle Road for pedestrians, but we respectfully request that instead of at the south side of Lot 29, that we provide that with the emergency access, which would be to the north portion of Lot 22, I'm sorry, the west of Lot 22 around where the emergency access is.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Tamara, can you mark that?
Yeah. If I can get this to work. I can never work this.
Looks like you're on the right.
Is it going to do it? Okay, so, right in this location. In lieu of down here. So, the bottom one is where staff would, has put it in the staff report, and we're requesting for that to go up to the north. So, the connectivity will still be there, and the staff report states that the connectivity to the north from this location be at that emergency access. So, it would put all the pedestrians in that one area and not take away from the parcel there at that south side. Let's see where I'm at. Okay, so, and then pedestrian paths to the school district on that landscape buffer at the north on the parcel that is not before you for the preliminary plat. Pedestrian connectivity will be provided there to the school parcel, which is immediately to the east of this site. I believe it's a new high school. Lastly, we respectfully request your approval tonight with the proposed condition modifications. Our proposed project complies with the UDC and the comprehensive plan. The project does not need to go back to planning and zoning or be continued. The property or the concept plan only changed for the north parcel. That is a concept plan that will be attached to the development agreement, but it will still have to come back for a preliminary plat, and it has the same number of lots. The traffic doesn't change so substantially. It's not considerably different. So, we're asking for your approval tonight and not continue the project. And I think Gary would like to say a few words, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Gary Allen. My address is 601 West Bannock in Boise with the Gibbons Persley Law Firm, representing the developer. Do we have an Almo? Is that?
Almo, uh-huh. Caleb.
Not there.
Yes, in there.
Pull it out.
It's in there.
Right there.
There it is.
All right.
Need some help? I'm sure you've worked on before.
Yeah. I've never had this set on my control. Does that get the whole thing?
You can see it on here, too.
All right. Terrific. Okay. Let's see, autofocus? How do I get this to focus a little better?
Push that autofocus.
There you go.
Okay, that's pretty good. Okay. Thank you for your patience. What I would like to do is just touch a little bit on some of the reasons that the Planning and Zoning Commission gave for denial of the application. Tamara's done a good job of talking about these, but I want to add a little bit of gloss. And where I'd like to start is I want to get on my soapbox about private streets in a gated development. So, this picture that you have in front of you was taken, this is near, so many of you know my partner, Ed Miller. So, he lives on the island in Riverrun in Boise, and that's a 35-unit gated development with private streets. And so, what you see here is one of the streets on the island, and it's 23 feet wide. And so, you can see, you know, what that looks like in this context. And, you know, without any prompting, Ed always raves about the streets in this development, that when you have a street that's narrow like this, people slow down. You can be, you know, there's no sidewalks here, so people walk on the street. The cars adjust to that. They actually will stop, and, you know, people have a conversation with somebody driving by. And it creates a whole different flavor in a neighborhood to have a street like this. And so, you know, and they're like this all the way through the development. These are 23-foot streets. So, they're just a little bit narrower than what you're considering this evening. And we have a strong testimonial for them. Well, one of the things that you wonder about with streets like this is what happens if there was a fire? You know, that's, and in fact, there was a fire on the island a couple of years ago. And so, Ed gave me some pictures of how the fire trucks handled that kind of situation. And so, here they are. You can see that there's room for people to get by, not that a lot of people are just going to drive by when there's a fire in the middle of the neighborhood, but they're able to manage that quite well. Just a few more pictures showing all of that. They have the fire hose running right down the middle of the street. Another picture of the fire trucks parked along the side of the street. Clearly room for folks to get by, not creating any problems for anybody. And one more, just kind of showing how some of the trucks, you know, were able to get in there and take care of that fire situation without disrupting anything in that neighborhood. So, you know, the developer has given you the choice tonight about whether to approve private streets in a gated community. And I guess what I would urge is, take a hard look at this because this neighborhood will have a completely different feel with private streets as opposed to public streets. With public streets, wider, curb gutter, all of that, it's just another subdivision. With private streets, it can be something special. So, I would urge you to support that recommendation. The other things that the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about, the first one was leapfrog development. And I think Tamara did a good job talking about this. In no way is this a leapfrog development. It's in a logical place for further expansion of the city's boundaries. It doesn't define the southern or the eastern boundary of the city. The only thing unusual about it is that there is no preliminary plat proposed on the northern parcel here, and Tamara explained that's a logical thing to do in this location because, you know, you're building from the entrance of the development back through to the back parcel. And yes, you could do a preliminary plat on that northern parcel at this point, but, you know, based on what kind of, when did you give your potential for absorption in here? You know, that plat could expire, and we'd be right back in front of you. And even if you did plat it, it doesn't guarantee that any development is going to occur there. You know, that the market's going to drive the development through these parcels. And so, you know, it really shouldn't be a criterion for whether you approve or deny a development when it appears very logical that, and, you know, there's a concept plan and all of that to move forward at the appropriate time. The schools issue, we talked about that a bit. I want to add the point that if this is a gated community, it's likely to have a lot of more seniors and fewer school kids, so it'll have less impact on the schools. And then finally, as has been discussed, the stub street has been resolved with the neighbor to the north. So, we think that really all of the reasons that the P&amp;Z has been concerned about that either really are not valid or they have been addressed. So, we would urge your approval this evening. We think this is a good development that will be a nice addition to the city of Meridian. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I did have a number of people that did sign. When I read your name, if you would like to provide testimony at that time, I would invite you forward. Dan Luke signed up against. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Dan Luke. I live 3290 East Amity, Meridian. Does everybody know where I live? I live, I used to be on the corner of Eagle and Amity. Now, I live on the roundabout. I own an acre and a half right there. You guys see that?
Are you on the northeast, southeast?
On the south side. Well, I'm on the northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
In fact, they're wanting to build right around me. See what's going on there? So, my answer is no. These people, they shouldn't even be in here doing what they're doing. I'm going to tell you what happened. If it don't matter, it don't matter. But I'm going to tell you what happened before they even put the subdivision in there. Me and Allen's, which is, they own that property around me, or they used to own it, about 10 acres around me right there. Well, when they put the roundabout in, we put our properties together to try to sell the whole thing together. Well, these guys sneezed out on me, sneezed out on Mitchell Investments, and bought the property around me, and they don't want no part of my property. The reason why is because there's going to be five lanes on each side of me with a double roundabout right there. They've already raised the road up where you can't put a fence, you know, for blockage. The road's too high. They got me in a hole right there. And these people come up here, I don't know, a month ago or two months ago, whenever it was, some guy named Sanderson, he offered me half of what my property's worth. You don't think that's a bunch of crap? So, what they're doing is they're putting, they're using my property as a barrier against that roundabout so the people won't have to deal with that. You see what I'm saying? I know this is land use for houses and stuff, but I think this map needs to be changed. Now, another thing I want to say is that if you look at, have you seen Roger Taylor's house? He lives on Eagle, just down the road from me. And if you look at these houses, what they're putting in here, there's no comparison about his house on these other ones. These houses they're putting in, they look like Hubble Homes compared to his house. He's got a custom-built house on 10 acres. The same thing with Allen's. Allen's that sold their property, he got this huge house, this garage that's probably take three of these houses. And they're trying to group all these houses in between our places. They're leapfrogging, and that's not right. If they're going to develop something, develop the whole thing. You know, I'm not, I'm just asking what my investor told me what my property's worth. That's all I'm trying to get out of it. You try to find something, an acre someplace, and it's going to cost over $200,000. This guy here only offered me 70 grand for mine. I'm just trying to tell you who you're up against. I don't think, nobody, none of the neighbors like it. You know, my house, when they build, when they get that five lane in, is too close to the road, and nobody wants, is going to buy my house. It's an old Montgomery Ward's house. It's an old farmhouse. That's why I put it up for sale. You know, these people don't care about the people around there that have been living there for a long time. So, I just want you to understand what's going on, and, you know, everything sounds great, you know, to these people, but the people have been there for a long time. To me, they're just, I just don't think it's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. I appreciate it. Joe Luke also signed up against. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Luke, 3290 East Amity, Meridian.
Thank you.
I just want to say, this is our corner there. I didn't get to see what that little blue mark was that she, the lady, put on the map when she was drawing the developer.
Okay.
What's the bottom? This part here? What was that little? What was that little bottom part?
I think it was a mistake.
Oh, was it? Okay, because I didn't get to hear that. Anyway, I just want to say this house has been family-owned since '48, and it's just a shame that all that is being proposed to be built behind us. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Roger Tyler, Taylor, signed up against. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Roger Taylor, 4606 South Eagle Road in Meridian.
Thank you.
83642. I've got a couple of questions. The, since they've changed this, of course, we don't know what this back is going to be, but you can see here all the open spaces there. And now with the new, they've moved the open spaces over here instead of along here. I have a little concern about that. And then my, and again, another question is, when they say the average lot size, do they include that two and a third acre lot that's in there?
I can't answer that. We'll ask the applicant to answer.
So that makes these lots awful, awful small. Density is a real problem. Over, let's see, how can we go up north? North and east? Okay, right here, this land here is all going to be developed. We had a neighborhood meeting the other day, and it's all going R4, which would be nice if we kept everything here. This one's R4, so it'd be nice to keep the same concept all the way through. Now, they're talking about a fence of five feet. That's really not a privacy fence. Six feet to have any type of privacy whatsoever. Because my place is here. So privacy around it would be nice, but density is my real concern, and the fence, of course. That's big, too. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you so much. Frank Schumaker signed up against. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Frank Schumaker, and I live at 3497 Zaldea Lane, which on this map is right I have some comments. First of all, my neighbor, Mr. DeAngeli, who lives at this portion right here, cannot be here tonight, so I may run over the three-minute timeframe. I'd like to address some of the issues he had, too, if that's possible. So I'll be as quick as I can. First of all, I oppose the nesting swan subdivision as proposed, and I must say, this was prior to this new phase, because we, no one ever saw the new phase or new plan. Approving Phase 1 will dictate the configuration of Phase 2, which is my primarily concern because that butts myself into my property. The nesting swan project was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission on February 5th with recommendation of denial. Primary reasons were the small lots and poor location of stub road accessing the Schumaker property in Phase 2. That stub road has been relocated as identified tonight approximately 350 feet to the west or thereabout. I agree with the findings of the Planning and Zoning and would like to provide some additional facts. The Kingsbridge subdivision, which is located this area in here, was initially, had some very small lots. At that point in, let's see, at that point in time, that was a R8 zoning, as is this right here, and those lots backed up to Zaldea Lane's. The perimeter lots in Phase 2 of the nesting swan subdivision, south of the Schumaker and DeAngeli properties, are similar in size as to what was denied in the Kingsbridge approval process. The concerns from the neighborhood is also the reference to the one-level houses and the need for landscaping bermed areas. The lot designed for Kingsbridge was modified and changed to the larger lots being leased. And I, the plats I looked at this afternoon, there's 15,400 square feet are the approximate sizes on those lots backing to Zaldea Lane from the Kingsbridge subdivision. A berm landscape and a six-foot fence was required. These changes resulted in a good transition zone. The Napoli subdivision located, let's see, right, right here, the Napoli subdivision was approved in 2006. There's five lots that back up to the west portion of the DeAngeli property. These lots are approximately 12,200 square feet in size. There are also, I believe, three one-level houses, one with a bonus room and the other with a two-level. And the Kingsbridge subdivision, as mentioned previously, over here, we have one-story, we have an existing house here, we have a one-story here, one-story, one-story, one-story. Nice buffer zone, good landscaping, very good transition, as to what the city council desired at that time to high-accreaged properties. So the DeAngeli property and the Schumaker property, as mentioned earlier, are in the planning stages, the developer being the same as the Kingsbridge subdivision. The lot sizes dividing the Schumaker and DeAngeli property, this area right in here, is approximately, let's see, there's about four lots there, they're about 80 feet by 135 feet deep. So those lots are around almost 11,000 square feet. They also, these lots along that perimeter, at least three of those lots will be identified as one-story houses only. The reason for that is we'd like to have some rear yard privacy. We don't need a big, humongous two-story looking down on the privacy of a one-level in a backyard. So by having the one-levels on the Schumaker-DeAngeli property as would be identified in the covenants, then I think it's only fair that those lots in the south side or the north side of the nesting swan subdivision also be one-level houses. Because those lots are going to become attractive if they don't, they know they're not going to have a two-story looking down on them. The lots also need to be larger and as a good transition area as we already have out there. So in summary, I would like to say that the lots on the north perimeter of the nesting swan subdivision need to continue the transition period as we see now, large lots, one-level configuration, and provide a buffer zone adjacent to the subdivision. And a five-foot fence doesn't do it. You need to have a buffer zone of, a berm of landscaping and with a six-foot fence on top of that. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you. Randy Clarino signed up as neutral.
I don't have anything to add unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Okay, this is, the list that have signed up to testify, is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this application? Okay. I would ask the applicant to come and respond to many of the items that were brought up and to wrap up their remarks. If you'll just restate your name for the record.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Tamara Thompson again. I will go through each of the comments that I heard and try to address those best I can. I do know that our client, who is the applicant, did try to buy the Luke's property, and they were apart on price. So what we've done is we've provided access to a private gated community that hopefully will retain the value, so his access would no longer need to be on Amity Road. It could come internal and be part of a private community and keep the value that way. The Taylors, we did have a, let's see, the R, his main concern, he said, was density. We are asking for R8 for the zoning. The property has a comprehensive plan designation of medium density, which is R3 to R8. Our density, as it's currently laid out, is 2.99 lots per acre, so we're under that by just a little bit. If you remove the existing home, which is larger, our density is 3.79 dwelling units per acre. So we are at the lower end of what is allowed there for the medium-density residential. The Schumakers and DeAngeli's are, their properties are under contract right now with Mr. Clarino. And Mr. Clarino met with us and told us that, you know, he was the one doing the development there. So we did address the access to the north with him and were negligent in circling back with those two property owners because their properties were under contract, so we didn't go talk to them. The, a couple of the items that they mentioned, and what I'd like to point out, as far as the transition zone, we have a 30-foot landscape setback between the properties. So property lines don't touch. Our rear property line and their rear property line do not touch. We're providing that 30-foot landscape or that 30-foot buffer area, easement area, as our transition zone. And Mr. Clarino has stated in writing to staff that he is agreeable with that transition for the development that he is proposing. And I think that was it, unless you can remind me of something else, so, unless you have other questions.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
There was also a question about the fencing, why it's five feet instead of six feet.
Our ordinance is five feet.
Is five feet?
Yes.
Okay, well, then that was, answered the question.
Mr. Bird.
What is, Tamara, what's the width of your lots, average width? They look awful small to get 2.39 lots per acre.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, let me just grab this here. So on our current, so the, what I have dimensions for are, is on the preliminary plat, so the southern portion.
Forty-five is sixty feet?
So the majority of the lots are in the 58 to 60, 65-foot range on width. And in this zone, I believe it's thirty.
What's the average square footage?
The, the average, I'm not sure, but it ranges typically there in the 63, 6,200 to 6,300 square feet per lot.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
I have a question for Mr. Nary with respect to gated communities. It's back.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Nary, not Mr. Gary.
If Mr. Gary may want to say something, too.
That's all right, Gary. I appreciate you responding. Bill, question on the gated communities.
Sorry. Stop.
All right. I'm done. We have several of those in our community. What are the requirements? I thought there was, I know for senior gated, you have to have a community center and that sort of thing. Are there for just the general population, any requirements?
I apologize to Councilman Roundtree, Madam Members of the Council, because I know with the UDC, I think we left the similar requirements. So I don't recall any change that we made when we put the UDC in from the old ones, but I haven't had a chance, I haven't looked at that recently to tell you off the top of my head if there's a specific requirement about amenities or some type of community center or something like that.
Sonya can help me, and then if that's not the case, then I'll rely on another liar.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Roundtree. Gated developments are allowed. There are no specific provisions in them for amenities.
As far as private roads, are there provisions that we still need sidewalks or curbs or gutters or drainage of some kind?
Sidewalks are required along only one side of the street.
Okay.
Streets.
How about drainage?
Yeah, it just needs to be retained on site.
Gary, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sonya did a good job.
Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Bird.
Just a statement on my part while we get the public hearing going. You know, we've required everything to the north of that to be an R4. And the problem I see, to us before, this comes in with a preliminary plat, and then it gets sold, but it's still an R8, and we start getting different stuff. I can't, I planned, I felt that we need to make two Eagle Road, keep that an R4 district. I think we got plenty of R8s and R15s out in that area. I think we need, like we have to the north of this, keep it R4.
Yes, I would ask staff, what kind of percentages do we have with the R8 versus the R4? Do you have?
74.
If you were Tuskegee, yeah.
I guess in the comp plan, it states between 3 and 8, so it's hard to justify or quantify that. My concern is, is kind of what we've seen across our city is a Swiss cheese. And, you know, my concern is leaving that corner open and, as well as the retirement center. At some point, when do you get some of this annexation and clean up? Counsel hasn't been in favor of force annexing, and we create a nightmare for our police department by creating pieces and parts of some of its city, some of its county, and providing services. And who are the first responders and who has the authority to make the decisions? Some somewhat get clouded and complicated. So another thing that Council has asked is when we're annexing, that the preliminary plat accompanies that application. And in this case, we just have half with a preliminary plat and the other half with one that is on its way but isn't quite accepted yet. And I guess to accept any reference to the property to the north when we haven't had an approval and we haven't had it in front of us is hard to say what it is and what it isn't. So I guess those are some of the things that are unclear and certainly have some concern.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
What are you showing us?
I'm showing you. I'm showing you, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Roundtree, Councilman. I'm showing you our future land use map. It's in our comprehensive plan. Uh, this is a property here just for reference on how this area is designated for future land uses. So, the yellow is, um, medium-density residential, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre. And the light green is, um, fewer than three units per acre.
Mm-hmm. Tamara?
Madam Mayor, um, Councilman Bird, we've looked at the, um, the dimensional standards and we could live with the R eight. We're under, under eight, or I'm sorry, the R four, we're under four per acre currently. Um, the, the kicker on that is the, is the dimensional standards. So, if we could, if we could zone to R four, but get a waiver for the dimensional standards for an R eight, um, we're, we're agreeable with that.
Okay, thank you, Tamara.
Madam Mayor, can I just comment on that, uh, offer there? Um, I'd rather see, if you're going to approve this project, I'd rather see the lots that are on that private street zoned R eight because that's what they are. And the two-point-whatever home that's there, zone that R four. It, it really is difficult to zone something, something, but then you have, has to follow other rules. That's going to get lost over time. And that two-point-whatever acre home that's staying is going to redevelop someday. And you really are going to end up with five, six, seven dwelling units per acre overall on this property. So, if that's what you want to do, that's fine, but let's not zone it something and say, and call it something else. I mean, zone it, zone it what it is. It should match the dimensional standards. That's what your zoning is.
Sonia, do you have a map of what has been annexed in, in that area?
Why, yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Here we are. Um, the area we're talking about are these parcels right here.
Okay, and there are annexed properties further south of that?
There are.
South of Amity?
Hills Century Farm and, uh, Southern Highlands and White Bark here, all those you see.
And what is the density in, in, in those two areas?
It's R eight over in Hills.
Um, Southern Highland was zoned R four and R two. I do not know what the density is off the top of my head. Um, Hills Century Farm is zoned R eight. And I believe they were at the lower end of the R eight.
Counsel, any, um, additional information that you need?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'm not certain if, if perspectives have changed over the time, but your remarks regarding preliminary plats coming with annexations, maybe even more so in, in some of the challenging areas like, like this one, uh, seems to make sense. I know it had before been that, the practice to do that. Um, the fact that this has, you know, a concept plan that's changed considerably, um, perhaps for the better, but after planning and zoning, it's a recommendation. Those issues are of concern. On, on the other side, I do, I agree with, with, uh, Gary with regards to private streets. I do think those might provide a different atmosphere within a community. But this one's, this is a tough one.
Well, I haven't been shy that I like gated communities and private streets. I know our fire department's not as excited about it, but, um, we saw good pictures that showed that you can put fire engines on those streets. Sonia, has, uh, the application for that, that second piece of land been filed?
A preliminary plat, Madam Mayor? No, it has not.
Okay. Was in a conceptual plan?
That's correct.
Changed from planning and zoning to the city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
My thoughts on this, I, I think the, the plat that we have before us, uh, aside from the conceptual piece, uh, I don't have any issue with other than the large lot that ultimately could be redeveloped to, uh, bring forth a, a number of other folks in the future when that becomes apartments. So, I have a problem annexing it or, or approving a preliminary plat in that form with the unknown. Again, I don't have a problem with private street and gated community. I, I, I think they work well as long as you have at least one sidewalk on one side and you have the amenities. And I don't have a problem with the density that's being proposed other than what's going to happen when that other piece redevelops. With respect to the concept, uh, we have historically always dealt with, uh, buffers between the transition between R two, R three, R four, R eight, R fifteen, uh, on a case-by-case basis and on a, on a preliminary plot, plat by preliminary plat. Uh, I, but by no means if I were to go to the affirmative on this application, w- would that be an implication on my part that I agree with the, uh, necessary transition that is taking place between the lots there? But apparently, that's kind of up in the air. We don't know what's going to come before us at some point in time in the future. And apparently, that's in the works. So, I, I guess my thoughts on that is it, it, it's conceptual. If it comes before us at some point in time in the future, we can, uh, say, mm, no, we want, uh, something like this to accommodate what's going on around it. As far as annexation, I don't have a problem with the annexation piece. I do not believe it's leapfrog. We have the city of Meridian, a quarter of a mile to the south of this property, across the, across Eagle Road. Um, if you look at it from, from that point of view, this is an infill. I think many of the questions that were brought during planning and zoning have been answered, but I do believe the concept, uh, has changed somewhat. So, I guess if it's the desire of the council to send it back for reconsideration to planning and zoning since they denied it in the first place, uh, maybe that's an opportunity for them to, uh, explore the conceptual aspect, aspect of this piece and, and the, uh, the question that would arise, or how do you deal with the question that arises when that one large parcel redevelops?
May I? Um, if, if counsel is in favor of annexing this property and is concerned about, um, the two large, um, existing residential properties, you may want to, um, recommend continuance or remand the application and, and ask the applicant to come back with a concept plan on both of those properties that we could tie, uh, development to through the development agreement. Then we'd have some assurance on what would happen on those parcels when the, if the property is given the zoning requested.
Well, I, I guess the additional concern is, is going back to the Luke's pro- property. Um, it seems odd to say that you would be concerned that you would land lock a piece of property. But when it's on the corner and they will not have access, you're essentially land locking a piece of property, if that makes any sense. But my concern is you, you really limit what can be done on that corner by not considering it as part of this larger application. And, um, and by leaving it out, you, you do leave a, a piece that you don't know what that piece is. And, again, a, a concern of, of annexing and, and missing pieces and parts is concerned. So, maybe if it's remanded back, um, that can be part of what, what are the possibilities, um, there too?
Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
The only positive thing I can see coming out tonight is remanding it back to planning and zoning with the new, uh, set of conceptual, new plat and getting some of these questions answered.
Do you have a comment before?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Tamara Thompson, I just wanted to clarify, um, that if, if there's any confusion on the age of those existing homes, uh, they were built relatively, or they're relatively new homes. Um, I want to say 90 to 94-ish is where they are. So, they're not, what Mr. Luke, um, was talking about, his was 1948. Um, they're not, they're not that timeframe. They are relatively new. And those two current property owners are retaining their homes and they don't have any plans to redevelop at this point. Um, so, I just wanted to clarify that so there wasn't any confusion there on the age of the homes.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess one more thing I would throw in there for consideration if you were to remand this is, is the street alignment. I, I do understand the concern of Mr. Taylor with the movement of the green space because that really is his backyard. And I don't have any perspective of where that house is on, on the property to the west. But, um, it, it runs a road clear alongside his, his certainly gives some good buffers to the existing homes in the annexed areas, but trying to further muddle things. I, I really am not trying to. So, what is the will of this council?
We've got to close the public hearings. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we close the public hearings on AZ 14 dash 016 and PP 14 dash 018.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearings on items eight F and G. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
For discussion, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Bird.
I have no problem with the annexation right now, except zoning. And I realize we got R eight zoning out there, but not I, I feel that we need to keep R four down to Amity on the east side of Eagle Road because that's what we got started and way to go. South of that or over to the west of it, we're already there with R eight. But we have made, we have made a couple of subdivisions changed to R four north of this. They wanted to come in. And, you know, they're, they're, um, while these homes are, uh, the two properties they're talking about is basically maybe 20 years old at the most, if I remember. Dollars talk. And somebody comes out there and wants to put in apartments or stuff while we, we're sitting here. The density goes up real high, so. Uh, I, some of you other guys come in here on the preliminary plat, I think has to definitely go back before planning and zoning because what we're seeing is nothing that they see, as I understand, on the one part. So, and and I didn't see where anybody objected to the zoning. I, I, I don't know if I'm the only one that objects to that. So, you know, why send that back through the mail? But I'll let some of you guys other weigh in here.
Ms. Mylum.
So, Caleb, Caleb, didn't you say we could split up the zoning?
Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum. Um, that would be my preferred, if that's what you'd like to do. I'd rather zone the lots to represent the lot sizes versus zone then something they're not. I guess I would just confirm with Mr. Nary, he's okay. This was noticed for something more intense. And what you'd be doing is zoning, downzoning something, if you will, to something less intense. So, if you were to take the, I don't know if you're looking at both of the existing larger home sites and, and zoning both of those to R four and leaving everything else R eight. But, um, again, I would confirm with Mr. Nary, he's okay with that. Again, this was noticed for something more intense. And if your action was something less intense, historically, we've been okay with that. But you can't go the other way. You can't go to R 15. I don't think you are, but you couldn't, we couldn't go the other way. But I think we can lessen the intensity and be okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can just follow up, if that's the direction of council, though, we would need new legal descriptions of the properties from, from the, uh, from the applicant.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Well, to your earlier comment, what might be helpful in, in part of the discussion with planning and zoning, I know that southwest corner parcel's not part of this project and it's not controlled, um, by the applicant. Can't necessarily be concept plan even. But, but I'd be curious to see other examples of, of how that, you know, in this type of intersection, that type of parcel being left excluded, um, has ever been successfully developed in the future. I think the pause that you see with what that might be left as, there's surely, that, just so that's part of the discussion. And, and the applicant probably has examples of where that's the concern that we're worried about can be alleviated, but.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, Councilman. Um, I can't think of any right off the top of my head. Um, but I can say that that is, that property is designated medium-density residential as well. And they would have either, depending on what the council determines, either public or private, um, street frontage to their property. Um, you could ask the applicant to prepare a concept plan. It's just a concept. It doesn't affect development of that property or, but to show how that could redevelop possibly in the future. Um, and if I could, just add a quick note on, um, Councilman Bird's testimony. Um, just for clarification, the preliminary plat itself, which is, is just the boundary, um, shown here, has not changed since the commission the commission hearing, except for if the council wants them to provide public streets rather than private. The concept plan is what's changed significantly, and that is associated with the annexation and zoning applications. So if the plat's remanded, the annexation zoning should go back also. Anyway, just to clarify.
Thanks. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'll throw this out. I don't want to sit here until midnight. I move that we take AZ 14-016 and PP 14-018 and send it back to planning and zoning in light of new concept planned and the private streets.
Do I have a second with discussion?
Discussion. And I think the remand to include really all of the considerations that we've raised here. And I don't know if we were remarked on the applicant's request to move the pedestrian access up further north on the western portion of the preliminary plat. I don't know if we ever gave direction. It didn't, from my perspective, I didn't have heartburn with that requested change.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that, Councilman Martin?
There was, one of the conditions of concern from the applicant was the location of the pedestrian.
The pedestrian pathway?
Correct.
Yeah, and the condition actually reads for the pathway to extend to the north, not necessarily to the west. And the reason for that is because these were proposed as private streets, and there was no connectivity to this parcel up here. So staff had recommended at least a pedestrian connectivity. And that was why also staff recommended a pathway connection down here where my pointer's at to Eagle Road. So we had one to Eagle, one to the north for future interconnectivity. If the commission and council decides to require public streets in here, then staff will probably recommend that this actually be stubbed as a public street to this property for future extension and interconnectivity.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I might have heard it wrong, but the portion where you're indicating the pedestrian pathway connecting north?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
My notes were that the applicant would have liked the pedestrian pathway to Eagle Road to exist at that location as well, rather than the southern portion.
Correct, yes. I think they may have thought, though, that my intent was an access to Eagle rather than to the north. If it's to both, then that could be okay.
Yeah, I didn't want that to be an issue of, to be addressed at the end of the year.
So specifically, it's being remanded back because of the change in the concept plan of the northern piece. Is council want conversation about the gated and private roads, or is council good with that on the southern piece?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'm very in favor of having a gated community, having the private roads. I think that's great. It works great.
The only concern would be is what that does to the Luke's property on the corner, because again, it's going to be dictating exactly what they can or cannot do on a private, on a private street. So that would be a conversation we'd want planning and zoning to contemplate there as well.
Access off Eagle Road.
Because, yeah, they should not have access off of Eagle or Amity because of the distances, unless I'm wrong. We can ask, we can ask ACHD if they'd make an exception. I don't think they would. And I don't think we really want to set that up. Anything further for council's desire in terms of having our planning and zoning commission discuss? Okay, I'm sure you kept good notes. I'm sure the applicant and the citizens have taken good notes, so anyway, it's been remanded, there is a motion and a second to remand this back to planning and zoning. So I will ask Madam Clerk to please call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Arumba?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9A, council, you have resolution 15-1056 in front of you. It is a resolution to appoint Robert Walder, Wal, Walder. Sorry, I apologize, I already messed up your name, to seat two of the Meridian Transportation Commission. He is with us today, and I will say what true commitment has already been shown to sit until 8:30 to hear his confirmation. I would ask if you have any questions.
Mayor.
Okay. I'll ask him if he wants to make comment after your motion and vote.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zarumba.
I move we approve resolution number 15-1056, appointing Robert Walder to seat two of the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9A. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Arumba?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Would you like to make any comment?
I won't. I don't want to take so much of your time.
He waited all this time to not make comment, but we appreciate your willingness to serve. We look forward to having you join our transportation commission, and we're excited about the background, the ideas that you have, bringing it to that group. So thank you for your interest in serving our community. Okay, item 9B is under our Public Works Department. I mean it. Over.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Matt Hoffman. I work in the Public Works Department as a GIS technician, and I'm coming to you this evening with a budget amendment to purchase three GPS units to equip our inspection staff as well as upgrading the licenses for that field software for asset management collection.
I'm not sure if you drew the short straw that you were tagged as someone to get up and present. Council, do you have any questions for Matt?
Madam.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Zarumba.
I would only add that my understanding from Mr. Barry is that the department has six people attempting to do this job, but only three units. Therefore, the request for three more units, it's a lot of field work, and if they have to share the units, they lose a lot of time, and it's a great inconvenience. So as liaison, I was happy to sign the application for this.
Thank you.
If we're ready, I would make a motion.
I would accept that.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve item 9B, the budget amendment for Trimble GPS purchases, which also includes some additional licensing seats for the not to exceed amount of $23,339.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Arumba?
Aye.
Ayes, thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Item 9C is under our Community Development Department, and I'll turn this over to Caleb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I heard Councilman Bird say he really wanted to stay here till midnight, so this is the perfect agenda to talk about this. No.
You want to remember, I don't have a real job.
No, I got to be back here. I got to be here at eight in the morning. So we'll try to make this as quick as possible. I'll get into some of the details here, but just a quick, high level, the transportation commission didn't make a whole lot of wholesale changes to the priority list from last year, but let me start from the top. So ACHD sent us a letter saying they're getting ready to begin their 2016 to 2020 Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, and part of that is outreach to other agencies to put together a priority list. So we do this on an annual basis. Some years, it's been a little more of a challenge than others, but again, the transportation commission, all things considered, made relatively few changes from previous years where the Transportation Task Force used to do this and make a recommendation to you all. I am bringing their recommended priority lists for 2015 on roadways, intersections, and community programs to you this evening, and we'll just jump right into the priority lists. And I'm not planning on going through all these. The yellow projects that you see highlighted, this was all in the memo in your packet, the yellow highlighted projects have either moved up or down in priority five or more points. So that's what the yellow highlight represents. I just picked five spots. So there are some of them that have moved four, I didn't highlight those, but those are, if you will, substantial in my opinion. Just to kind of orient you a little bit, any of the shorthand, or just to see how these tables lay out, the transportation commission recommended draft order is the first column. So you can see they're ordered. If you just accept their recommendation, that's how it'll be. This is your priority ranked from last year. So again, anything that's yellow, moved up or down more than five position points from last year, I will try, I will go through and explain some of their rationale, or at least what I heard, and some of the bigger changes they made, some of these smaller ones I won't address unless you ask me. There are a couple of new projects, and that's, tried to bold it, it kind of got lost here a little bit, but the Victory, Locust Grove to Eagle project, we didn't have it ranked last year, that's a new project in roadways. There are 80, or excuse me, 93 projects on ACHD's prioritization spreadsheet, so this column shows you how any given project ranks at ACHD, and then the name of the segment we're talking about or intersection here in a minute. CN is a construction year. These are in millions of dollars. CIP, Capital Improvements Plan, so that's the 20-year plan at ACHD. UF is unfunded. I don't know that I have too many other shorthands. And then the level of service, so F is the worst, an A or a C are real good, E are starting to push towards F, but D is acceptable. So think of it somewhat as a report card for how those roadways intersections function as a high-level refresher. So just a couple of the notes that I had from the transportation commission, again, focusing on some of why they made some changes, and this was kind of a little bit of back and forth. Last year, they recommended to you all that this segment of Meridian Road be somewhere in the top 10. You all recommended moving that down, and they said, you know what, we think we had it right. So we moved it back to where, this is essentially where they had it last year. Some of that is the bottleneck that they're seeing north of Cherry on Meridian Road, and so this is the, where Meridian Road turns into the three-lane facility with the split corridor now being open, that's where we moved the bottleneck to between there and Ustick. So their experience was, yeah, this is a top 10-worthy project there. I gave them a little bit, although I tried not to put too many words in your all mouths from what happened. They were kind of curious, well, why did they move some of our projects down? And I remembered some of that from last year, but I didn't remember the entire discussion. But Project 11, 10 Mile Victory to Overland, I did mention, you know, the citywide survey that had been done, and folks, a lot of residents, business owners in South Meridian saying, hey, we need some more attention in South Meridian, you're focusing a lot of your projects north of the freeway, we have needs down here too. And they said, you know what, we hear that too. And so they moved this project up a little bit more, 10 Mile Victory to Overland. We have some transportation commissioners that drive that on a regular basis, and say, yeah, I can attest to this, there's a need here in this area. And again, 12 was new. So I'll just go to, scroll to the bottom real quick and mention that our number one project from last year is under construction now, and most of you has probably driven out there and seen the construction, so that one comes off of the list as per usual. If it's under construction, it doesn't need to be on our list anymore, because it's not, just because we take it off of our list doesn't mean ACHD's going to slam on the brakes and not do the project, because it's not on our priority list anymore. So they understand that. The other project that's in that same timeframe is the McMillan, Locust Grove to Eagle, which about half of that is in Meridian. So those two projects come off. With that, that's the roadway priorities as recommended by the transportation commission, and I think I'll pause for any comments. If we can kind of take these one at a time, probably will help the discussion go along. So with that, that's my presentation on the roadways. Oh, I'm sorry, I will maybe just recommend or refresh, not just because it's getting late in the evening, but if, I'll take comments on any projects, but we probably don't need to worry too much about our number 29 and 31 and swapping those around too much. Really, ACHD only cares about our top 10, 12, 15, 20 projects. So if we're talking about in this neighborhood, that's great, and again, if you see something down near the bottom, you're like, hey, we need to move this to the middle pack, we can do that, but it really is our top 20 that we really need to work on. So again, I'll take any comments, but the ones that matter are going to be in your top 10.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Caleb, I can agree with the commission 100%. I mean, sure, there's other, there's certain ones you'd like to see get up, moved up, but the way they've gotten ranked, I think, I think it's very good, and, you know, I have no problem with it at all.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum, sorry. Caleb, the one thing that stands out to me is the Ustick Road. So if they're doing Locust Grove to Meridian, wouldn't it be better to just do it all at the same time if they're going to continue that on to Linder, just to do that as one project, or?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Mylum, certainly it could, and if, you know, and they are, really. These are sort of bonus points. ACHD has their prioritization process, they'd like to know what our priorities are. You know, the next mile of Ustick, Linder to Meridian is in the top 10. If you want to bump it up higher to number two even, that would be okay, but that is how ACHD is designing and planning for that, to make it a seamless, if you look even in the, what is that, the fifth column, they have the same construction year. So CN 2018, 2019, so they are tracking together. If you want to make that more, yep, these are our top two projects, that's fine, but just so you know, at ACHD, they're programming it that way.
Caleb, Madam Mayor, I think it's past time that we let the Linder Overpass go. I think we need to put some emphasis on that. I don't know if the city and ACHD are going to have to partner like we did for Locust Grove, but that needs to be, that needs to finish our system. That's a major roadblock and puts a lot of traffic out of direction, particularly as that area to the south develops. So I think I'll put some emphasis on it as opposed to having it linger down there in the, in the low teens and twenties. To me, let them know we're in, we want something done, and maybe we need to start some dialogue with District 3. And I know they're going to, I know what they're going to tell you, but.
And Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, I don't know if you're quite done there. That was, that was actually a project that the transportation commission discussed as well. As you'll see in some of these other lists, anything on the state facility, though, they said, these lists are going to ACHD. We're not trying to prove a point to ACHD that's a priority, but if we're talking about a partnership and asking ACHD to get in the game, come along with us and the state and do a project like Linder Road, I think we can move it up, but.
That helps their system way more than it helps the state system, but it would be a state facility, so.
And I think they recognize that as well. I just don't know at this point that they're going to be, the paradigm is going to shift because we move this up even to the top 10. It's just, it's not, still not going to score well, but at the dialogue, I hear you. I can have that dialogue and start that with ACHD. In fact, we're already talking about that. And again, that was something the transportation commission talked about. This $12.1 million, is that just ACHD's? This twelve-point-one million dollars, is that just ACHD's portion? Because it's gonna be probably more than that to do the full structure, the overpass there, but.
Just gets more every year.
Yeah. So we can, we certainly can move it up, and I do think it's time. I, just as an aside quickly, I get more phone calls probably on, when is Linder, when are we getting the Locust Grove overpass at Linder Road than I do probably on any other topic?
Any other comments from our council members?
Madam Mayor.
When is, when is this due, Caleb?
Good question, Madam Mayor. They would like our priorities by April fifteen.
So you can, you can ponder this, and we can put it back on, and give you a little bit more time to, to see how we want to prioritize these or accept the Transportation Commission's recommendations. Mr. Zeromba.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is kind of a sideways comment, but it just occurred to me while looking at it. The draft-ranked priority, I think, was thirty-three or thirty-four. Can you scan down? Thirty-three. Seeing the East Third Street connection there reminded me. It's nice to see that Cole Christian is going to develop that property on a temporary basis as a field. But it occurred to me the other day, as I'm driving north on East Third, we do have it in Meridian's plan and ACHD's plan sometime to connect East Third across there. Since there's been nothing on that property for a long time, it isn't a concern. But I would ask now, that Cole Christian is planning on using that property, if we could get a sign on Carlton at the north end of East Third that says, this street to be developed in the, but the typical sign says something like this, this street to be continued or extended, I believe the word. This street to be extended in the future. I think that should go on Carlton where Third Street dead ends, just so that isn't lost in the process at some point. That's a request to ACHD.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's what I was just gonna say. Councilman Zeromba, I can, I can ask Justin and others at ACHD if they'd be willing to put that sign up. If I can, since you brought that up, and I've talked to a couple of council members. If you haven't, Cole Valley has purchased that property across Two-and-a-Half Street. They are improving it for a field. They're gonna have JV games and some auxiliary fields, science classes, whatnot, that can, that can go on there. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve that last year. They are fully aware that Third Street someday will be extended through this property and bisected. But we thought, you know, it's not being utilized very well now. They had a buyer, and it got their wheels spinning, I think, about a master campus plan for their property. So when a road goes through, what do they do with their parking and expansion and things like that? So just quickly, wanted to let everyone know that, yes, that was part of the dialogue when we talked with them and through the Planning and Zoning Commission, we aren't allowing any structures to be put there because, again, someday there will be a road in that, in that location. But again, I'll ask ACHD if that's something we can do, probably on both ends of Third. I don't know if there's one there now or not, but I'll inquire and see if they wouldn't mind putting up those signs.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we can move on.
All right, so intersections, probably about the same, excuse me, amount of dialogue, and again, a similar tone. Some of their projects, Chindon, I'll just jump to Chindon. Last year, they had kind of down this realm, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And again, I think the council moved them up, three, four, five area, and they kind of moved them back. So again, they asked, and I said, you know what? Don't, you're not, don't worry about hurting the council's feelings, right? Do whatever you think the priorities are, tell them. Don't, don't worry about, oh, you know, are we, are we okay to, yeah, do it. Just, you know, it's a recommendation. If you feel that this is the recommendation you want to make, that's fine. And again, the Fairview Locust Grove was one, too, that was relatively high on their last, last year. I believe that was one, Councilman Roundtree moved back down, and they said, you know, I drive this, it's not very nice. There's a safety concern. They moved it back up, so. And I should have pointed out, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Councilman Zeromba was also at that Transportation Commission meeting, so if I'm leaving any thing of the summary out that he thinks was important, but that was kind of the tone and the flavor of the discussion for intersections. So with that, there's their recommended list.
Thank you, council, any comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
On the Chindon projects, we've still got Chindon Ten Mile, that's done. And that's probably not gonna change, is that gonna go away?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, it was, it's not done to its ultimate. So yes, there were improvements put in with the developer co-op that ACHD worked with Walmart on getting done. You can see it's last in the string, and they actually moved Chindon Locust Grove ahead in that, in that series. So before, this, this one was actually down at the bottom, and they moved Chindon Locust Grove ahead of the rest of the Chindon Intersections. But that is in its ultimate configuration, so. And again, anything outside of the top ten, you don't get any points anyways, but they like the idea of kind of keeping all those state facility, Chindon intersections together. So wherever they are, keep them, keep them together.
And I would, I would move Chindon, Meridian to the highest on that list at this point because it's got direct access to the interstate, that's where people are going.
I will just also point out the nine-nine-nine is not a typo. That is on ACHD's list, obviously that's higher than ninety-three. But again, anything on the state facilities doesn't score well with ACHD, but they're tracking it. You know, it's on their, it's on their list, but it, the cost benefit isn't there for them. I mean, again, they recognize the network benefit from improving those, but the state is kind of pulled back on their partnership levels on those intersections, and we're not the only ones hoping the state will find some money to make some of those improvements.
Help me understand the safety concerns at Fairview and Locust Grove.
So this is something new I've added, and sorry I didn't explain that at the beginning. Any project, so let me zoom down here, not quite sure what page it's on, towards the bottom, and this was in your packet. But in the spreadsheet that ACHD sent us, in the far, let's see, what is it? One, two, three, four.
I can't read it.
Now, can you see it?
That's better.
Holy cow, you come from the finance department?
No, we'll get it big enough here, just, I need to find, so. And it doesn't necessarily matter, matter the project, but the annual safety benefit, it's calculated, and Justin is still here. Thank you, Justin, for hanging out. He can actually tell you how this is calculated, but a fatality is worth so many dollars. A, you know, a serious injury is worth so many dollars. It's not the only thing, but basically there's classification levels of injuries. And so any project that had a benefit that ACHD calculated, over a hundred thousand dollars or more, I put safety benefit in that far-right-hand column. So you can see, you know, there's not a whole lot of them that end up having an annual safety benefit of a hundred thousand dollars or more. So for the Fairview Locust Grove, I'm not exactly sure how, how that's calculated or what the issue really is there. I don't know if it's the volume of inters, you know, if it's just a whole bunch of rear-end accidents, or if there's one fatality, or, and again, I don't, and I think it's a three or four, five-year average, so it's not just one accident, and all of a sudden it jumps up there. But general, what I did on that, my spreadsheet was say, any project where there's at least a hundred thousand dollars or more, safety benefit, I highlighted it. And Justin is ready, if you wanted to ask him anymore of how they actually calculate that, but, and I don't know if he may even know, Fairview Locust Grove, so.
I understand how you calculate it, I'm just trying to figure out what's the issue there. Is it, is it, is it the turning movement into Fred Meyer's? On, I mean, other than that, the signalization and the lane configuration work pretty good.
And Madam Mayor, Councilman Roundtree, before, before Justin speaks. I mean, I didn't look at cars, I didn't run the reports, we have police here, we have access to that. I just, I wasn't prepared tonight, and I don't, I don't know, so maybe Justin does.
Hi, Justin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Justin Lucas, Ada County Highway District, I'm the Planning and Programming Manager. I wish I had specifics on all the accident data. We have all that, and that's what drives this spreadsheet. That specific intersection does have some relatively unique access management issues, some of which have, if you've seen changes over time on that intersection, there's been some interim treatments that have gone in, candles, raised medians, curbing, other things that have affected both the Fred Meyer entrance and the entrance to the, I guess it's now a yogurt shop there and other things.
Right.
But if I had to wager a guess, I would imagine that most of the accidents at that intersection relate to those access management issues. And I, but I could verify that with hard data, if you, if you would like me to send that over.
Which I'm not sure an intersection job's gonna take care of.
Yeah. And that, just to also clarify, those mon, you know, monetizing accident issues and things like that, you know, it's more of an art than a science. That's not dollars saved by Ada County Highway District. Those dollars represent dollars saved by the people, the public, the users. And so that's what, I just want to make that very clear, that when you're looking at that detailed spreadsheet, and you see these dollars, safety and things like that, those aren't dollars that you or the ACHD, well, maybe you are, and maybe I am, hopefully I can avoid an accident out there, but it's just dollars saved by the public.
Okay. Go say next.
So the third priority list to consider this evening are the community programs projects. And these generally are sidewalk or pedestrian-type projects. Before the Transportation Commission meeting, is Jay still here? Yes, Jay is still here. So he can attest that we met with the school district and kind of went through the priority list that the Parks Commission has come up with for their pathway priorities, and with Miranda Carson at the school district, and compared what the school district has on their needs list, and what, what the transfer, or, excuse me, the Parks Commission has on their needs list, and then looking at what we had last year, and then added, subtracted, adjusted, kind of some things as I made a recommendation to the Transportation Commission. So on this one, sorry, this one shouldn't be highlighted yellow. On this one, there, the, the main changes were actually towards the end of, of the list. You can see the first page, that they're all the same as they were last year, so our top six. There's a little bit of juggling around, I can't remember what was seven last year, maybe we'll find it here. A real similar flavor, though, to the intersections we just talked about. There were a couple of projects that were up near the middle-third area, but they were along the state facilities, and the Transportation Commission said move those down to the bottom of the list. And so there was, nothing really moved up unless something ahead of it moved to the bottom of the list, and some projects rose up. But really, nothing, as far as priorities, really grew. They all just sort of moved up a couple as other projects moved down. And again, I'll just jump to the bottom real quick. Let me highlight these, I guess, because there's some new projects, I'm sorry. Hopefully I'm not making anybody dizzy. The recommended new priority number eighteen, this is a piggyback, and you can see priority seventeen is right. Kentucky Ridge Way, that was a dialogue we all had on a project and with ACHD's commission and developers. This is the next piece, this is the piece north from Victory then, up to the new middle school site. So this was a priority that was added after that dialogue, the developers taking care of some of the things on Kentucky Way. And I should say, if anyone wants me to, I can pull up Google Earth, we can look at this, we can zoom in, get you a little more oriented if you like. But this is basically about a third of a mile to almost a half-mile west of Meridian Road on Victory. And started is that half-mile line, goes up to Walmart at Overland, kind of area, Lowe's. So again, there's sidewalk there, there's a new middle school planned, and there's some county parcels there that more than likely won't develop in the near future. They're one and two-acre lots, they kind of are what they are, and they don't have sidewalks. So this would be sort of a safe routes type of a project there. So that moved all the way up, its debut is at eighteen on the charts. This project was at eleven, but after some dialogue, particularly from, make sure this is the right project, Eustick and West Third. So this is, this is the project that's actually going in with the Meridian-Eustick intersection project. So ACHD's already scoped that. I do not recall why the Transportation Commission moved this down, I apologize. Do you recall, Councilman Zeromba? I don't remember why they.
I'm just, I'm trying to think, Caleb.
Maybe that's okay.
I remember it being commented on.
Yeah.
To correspond to that Meridian-Eustick intersection?
Signal pretty close to this, but that we received a request from that neighborhood south that, you know, kids aren't gonna go back a quarter-mile out of direction.
This gets them to our park or fastedies, and that's been a real big safety concern.
And I just don't recall why the Transportation Commission moved it down in, in order. Were you still there, Justin? Maybe Justin remembers you.
I was. I believe, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as I recall, Caleb, and there was some, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Eustick and Meridian intersection. And as part of that discussion, I think we talked about how this project was a component of that and was basically scheduled to be constructed, I believe, in two thousand seventeen. And as all that was kind of swirling around, this was, was moved down. And so it was all part of this, the discussion about the intersection, the pedestrian crossing was all happening somewhat at the same time. And so it wasn't extremely clear, but I remember coming up and speaking to that kind of shift, so.
I would still recommend that it's a priority for the city. I don't, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't move it down any further.
Well, and I guess, before you scroll too far past it, item twenty or twenty-two, the Meridian Rail Latrell has the Parks Department number-two priority, and in light of recent discussions on Fairview, the rail corridor is, has been seen as something that needs to move up as a priority for that protected, multi-use pathway opportunity. One of the most pristine areas that we can have a connected corridor with pathway pieces, but to begin a conversation with Ada County Highway District that this corridor is gonna be critical in being an alternative to the need to go east-west. And so want to make sure that that's in whatever top numbers that are seriously considered and one that really needs a conversation. There's been investment by the city and Compass in terms of this corridor as well.
Mayor, I may contradict myself a little bit, but based on what I said about intersections and the Linder Road overpass and making a statement with ACHD, this is one I, I agree. I think if, if it's gonna happen, we need a partner like ACHD to come alongside us. Didn't really get a lot of traction there with, with the Transportation Commission, but there it is, so. A few projects I recommended moving up, but like I said, projects really didn't move up unless something just moved down two or three spots. I'm scrolling again, are there any other comments on those, those projects? Bottom of the list, and again, we see some projects that moved down. This project, I think it's highlighted on here, the Hunter Elementary School boundary no longer goes north of McMillan Road. That played really big with the Transportation Commission, and so if it's not a safe routes type of thing, they wanted to move it down. So there it sits at thirty-one. And then again, Eagle Road, River Valley to Eustick, it's a state facility, so they said move it to the bottom of the list, but it was twelve. So, and it's grouped with the other state facility project there at thirty-three. So we're getting to the bottom of the list, there's a couple of new projects I just want to highlight real quick. I'm sorry, was there a comment?
I'm sorry.
No, okay. Just a couple of other new, new projects. We received a letter from the Meridian main. Just a couple of other new, new projects, there, we received a letter from the Meridian Main Branch Library about wanting a hawk signal midpoint between Linder and Eighth Street, right where the, the library is. There are a lot of kids that cross mid-block there, and they're concerned about safety. Again, that didn't, a couple of things on that. The school district said, "We've tried to tell our kids, go to, go to the light and cross, we don't think this, you should put this in to really..." "They need to change their behavior, we don't need to accommodate their bad behaviors," essentially what she said. So, the Transportation Commission said, "Well, if the school district doesn't want this crossing, we're okay keeping it on the list, but we don't really wanna move it higher than this, we'll keep it on the list." They didn't really see the need, so you'd have, you have a signal at Linder and Cherry, obviously. There would be a signal potentially about a quarter mile at the library, and then another signal at a quarter mile at Eighth Street. So they said, you know, they didn't really see this being a, a top-tier, tier project anyway, so I'll probably just leave it at that.
And they probably haven't seen the kids that do stand in the middle of the road to cross it, so. I, I would love to say we shouldn't reward bad behavior, but there, there is a huge gap and a huge number of kids in, in that area. There's a safety issue there.
So, there is one that, again, I, that, that was just a dialogue, so.
Don't shoot the messenger?
I don't necessarily concur, I am, yeah, I am the messenger here. Although I think they do a great job with this, so. 35, and, and this one, essentially what this comes down to is, if you're heading, I'll try to explain it without pulling up Google Maps. If you're heading east on Pine off of Eagle, say, and you're, Lewis and Clark's gonna be on your right or south, there's a lane that drops, and you have to merge back into the through lane. Well, just after you get through the intersection there, Parkdale, Park, Parkdale, it opens back up again, so you can turn right into Lewis and Clark. Essentially what the school district would like is make that a through lane, then people going to Lewis and Clark don't have to bottom, merge to then get back in the lane to turn, just make it, it's essentially an intersection project where you would just add a little bit of pavement to both sides, and I don't know if ACHD's had a chance to look at in the past three weeks, since the Transportation Commission did their recommendations, but it looks like with a little bit of restriping, maybe you can fit that extra lane in there, but that's essentially the request. It's not really a community programs project, it's more of a, it's more for motorists, so that the traffic on Pine can flow better, and you don't have to merge before you merge back over to turn, so. And I can pull up a picture if you'd like, but. That's school district's priority, and again, that didn't move very high. This redo crosswalk on West Eighth Street at Meridian Middle School. The mayor's office at first received that complaint. I have talked with the woman there, she's actually coming to, I can't remember if it's April or May, Transportation Commission meeting to explain a little bit more. I talked to her, essentially what her request is, she's okay with where it's at, she'd, she'd like to really see some more attention paid to it, flashing lights, cones put out by the school district, a crossing guard, something that really highlights, hey, this is a crosswalk where kids cross, because she says people will pull, pull up and park near the crosswalk, or even in the crosswalk, which screens kids that come, and now they're, you know, their first step is out in front of the car, and there's a car zooming by at 30 miles an hour, or whatever. So some way to really, you know, call attention to that crosswalk there. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more with the Transportation Commission, see what maybe we can do to work with the school district and ACHD.
And, and the problem is that crosswalk is kind of at the top of a little knoll. And so, until you're almost right on top of it, you don't know there's a crosswalk there. The, the vision to it is, is really difficult.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bill, my, Mr. Bill. Mr. Bill, Mr. Bill.
I'm sorry, Bill. That, that is definitely a problem, but the biggest problem is something that we're supposed to get taken care of last, last year by our police department, was, we got a school let out, you can't hardly get down Eighth Street because of all the cars pulling in there. They've got a complete parking lot sitting out there, where they could pull in and pick the kids up, but know the kids would probably have to walk a half a block.
Well, no, the, the bus drivers, they, they won't let cars really in there to pick them up.
And, and these kids, that crosswalk is right where the walk goes over to Seventh Street. And it is, mayor said right, it sits on a little, it's hard to see, and it's really hard to see when you got two cars parked on it. But, the kids are, in fact, today I had a little gal swing right out from tennis courts in her, on her, what are those, mopeds or that thing they?
Scooter?
Huh?
Little razor scooter?
No, not-
Is it motorized?
No, the thing that they ride, those kids, those-
A moped?
My kid had, and, no, they're pump, pumping. No, 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 they're-
Skateboards.
Skateboards. They're, they're after my time.
I was surprised for that.
You do, here.
I'm flying out there and drive, thing, but I will say, most people, I have to tell you that most people aren't going over 15 miles an hour down through there. They're, the car, the traffic is, is very good, and at the, and at the intersection now, they've got a guy that is there, watches it, and does a good job, so.
And Madam Mayor, I think, you know, this one, it's on our radar screen, I don't think we need to move it up necessarily, because it's really not, there's really no improvements out there, other than maybe some signs, maybe it, maybe it turns into a request for a hawk signal, maybe. But I, but I don't know where that's going, it, it is pretty fresh, that, that is just starting to be kicked around by the, by the Transportation Commission and ACHD. I do think the, the school resource officer knows about this as well, and the principal there, and the school district has engaged as well, so. We're talking about this, there, it's known that there's an issue, and, and different forces are working to solve it, so. There's that one. I think those are the new projects, Fairview, East Third to Locust Grove. Oh, I wanted to call this out, because I boo-booed on this one. I told the planning, or the Transportation Commission that it was under, under construction, but that was the overlay, and the, the pad ramps that were being done as part of the overlay on Fairview. So, this project actually isn't a construction 2017, so I'd request you move this back up into the top 10 somewhere, or somewhere in that general area, because I was a little premature and saw, you probably saw it too, a couple, three weeks ago, Fairview, there was a bunch of, in fact, I think there are still some candles out there at some of the pad ramps and sidewalks. And that is coming, we're doing design on that project, but it isn't construction in 15, it's gonna, well, it's still maybe 15, but it's gonna be maybe later this year. But that's the overlay project for Fairview that's really going on more immediately. So, again, if I have one request, one, one thing, and I don't think I'll hurt anybody on the Transportation Commission's feelings by asking you to move this back up somewhere in the vicinity of where it came from, because I, I messed that up. So with that, that's a community, community programs priority list. What I may just quickly update, since I have the floor, real quickly, just Main-Williams Crosswalk. That was also talked about previously, it's not on this list. But Main Street at Williams here in downtown, there's the thrift stores that are, and there's a lot, that crosswalk gets a lot of use. And with three lanes, similar to what we just talked about with Eighth Street, you get a car parked, and a kid walks from a parked car, is kinda screened until he takes the first step into the crosswalk. Sorry what you get with three lanes of traffic going the same way, the first lane may stop for a pedestrian, because they see it. If I'm behind them, "Why is this guy slowing down?", I'm gonna go around him and pass him. Well, they're stopping for a pedestrian that you can't see, so. Maybe we add that to, to the list. There is a crosswalk there, but there's no real improvements to that, so, as far as, you know, like we were talking before, calling attention to a crosswalk being there, and I don't necessarily have the solution there either, just wanted to bring that up. And let you know too, just as an FYI, that the crosswalk on Main and Franklin on the west side, ACHD is actually gonna disable that crosswalk for a similar concern with the dual lefts. So we're southbound on Main Street, and we're turning westbound onto Franklin, there's dual lefts there. The middle lane is a through left. Same deal though, the first car may see a pedestrian in that crosswalk, but the second one, he's around the corner, and they've had some near misses there. Not a lot of pedestrian traffic there, but ACHD is gonna put up a crosswalk closed sign on the Franklin, this would be the southwest corner of the Franklin-Main intersection, let people know that, "Do not cross here, go to the Story Park side and cross there, or go down to Meridian Road." There are two other crosswalks that are a lot better location within four, 500 feet, I didn't measure it, but it's not that far between those two crosswalks, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that's nothing to do with this, but, that's why, so. Madam Mayor, members of council, that's, that's community programs.
Thank you, Caleb.
Madam Mayor, while we're on this transportation topic, we have a scheduled meeting, joint meeting with ACHD on the 7th at noon. I've been asked to generate some ideas for the agenda. I think one thing I have in mind, based on some information we got from ACHD, is talk about the public transportation direction they're going, but if you all will think about that meeting and have some ideas for agenda items, would you get that to me soon? I need to get that back to Jim Hanson, so he can put the agenda together for ACHD.
Yes, Mr. Zaramba?
And Mr. President, I, I would mention something that Caleb already mentioned, is that maybe getting ACHD involved in the Rails with Trail idea also. If they're looking for things to help fund.
If anyone has any additional ideas, please get that to Mr. Roundtree. Okay, thank you, Caleb.
Madam Mayor?
Anything else?
No, I think that's, that's fine, just back to your recommendation or comment earlier about coming back with, I don't know if you wanted to ponder it more, I heard a couple of comments in there, but I didn't really hear any, "Let's move this project up", I, so, I don't know if you like what you see, or if we need another meeting. Up, up to your discretion, what you don't have in front of you is a letter, we typically prepare a letter, so I'll at least come back with that letter, unless you wanna just authorize the mayor to sign now with whatever priorities, but typically I'll bring back a letter that, that says attached to our priorities, but sometimes we have other comments in that letter, but I don't know how you wanna proceed, but we do need to have something to them by the 15th of April.
Well, council, maybe we can put this back on the agenda on the 24th next week. And I know we have two of our council members that will not be here, but have the, the letter on the 7th for approval, based on whatever is talked about on the 24th. Would ask council members, Mylum and Borton to get any comments, and Caleb. Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, spring break is next week, and I'm gonna be gone on Tuesday, but I can probably talk to Bruce. It, this doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of changes, so I could probably talk somebody into covering for me, but I just want you all to know I won't be here, I think-
We can have the conversation on April 7th then?
Yes.
And turn, turn around the, the letter, council can, can make the corrections if any are needed, and-
That'd work better for me anyway, so, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Item 9D is under our fire department. Thank you, Justin.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. Just real quick, I did wanna compliment the city on recognizing those Mountain View girls. Hallie has played against those girls for several years in AU, and played with them in the summertime, and I can tell you, they're not only great athletes, but great character in those young ladies, so I applaud you.
That's nice.
For recognizing them. And Councilman Borton, based on previous conversation, the undefeated season is gone. Extering loss to Rocky Mountain tonight, so. With that, Madam Mayor, members of council, I am here as a follow-up to the presentation given by Deputy Chief Palmer about Compliance Engine, as a reporting tool to ensure proper reporting of sprinkler system, fire alarm system, and hood system testing. And so I, I would like to make a correction very quickly to the document you have in front of you. The third bullet under background should say current testing timelines, not inspection timelines, I apologize, there's a, a big difference there. When we came to you in March, or correction, in November of this year, you asked us to go back and look at another tool that had been presented kinda last minute, again, this project's been going on for about a year and a half now. We took that to heart, we did go back and met with the developer of, of the other tool. We did have a meeting in February, of February 18th to be exact, to show that tool to the contractors that would be using it. We still had concerns after that demonstration, both from our standpoint, and then the contractors brought some of their concerns as well, and those are listed within, within the document in front of you. My biggest concern with it as a fire chief is this tool has not been used anywhere else, and I don't like to be a beta test site for software. I did that when I was with the county, and that was a disaster, and so I'd like to engage in someone who has a known product, a proven product. So if I could, I'd like to just hit the highlights with Compliance Engine, and then I can go back and answer any questions you may have in the interest of time. There is no cost to the city, and there is no IT support required. We cleared this with IT, it is a web-based or cloud-based program. The tool is proven, they've been in existence for four years. Just some quick background on that, the fire service industry recognized that we needed a tool for reporting of these testings. The International Association of Fire Chiefs tasked the Western Fire Chiefs Association to partner with somebody to develop a tool. So that's been now operational for four years. It's in 37 states, there's over 1,000 fire departments currently using this tool. And most recently, LA County signed on to be a part of that tool as well. The direction I gave early on is we started looking at finding something that met our needs, was to work with the city of Boise and the city of Nampa. One of the things I was concerned about is I didn't want different systems in the three biggest cities in the Treasure Valley, because the contractors cross all of those boundaries of those cities, so if we're gonna move forward with something, I did want it to be the same for those business owners, those contractors. So they've been a part of the process the entire time, including the presentation on February 18th. All are in agreement that Compliance Engine is the best tool to utilize and to adopt. The pricing with Compliance Engine offers the most fair opportunity, or pricing opportunity for the folks that will be using it. I know Councilman Berton, you had concerns about the length of a contract, the three-year pricing block. As we talked to the contractors, they felt that that was very fair, because they could plan their businesses three years out, they knew that pricing was set. The agreement also allows for a 90-day opt-out, so if we become dissatisfied for any reason, there is an opt-out clause within the agreement. Just a couple other features, there is an automated 30-day notice that goes out to the property owners that testing of their systems is due. It allows the fire marshal, Chief Palmer, to have an easy-to-read dashboard, as you can see on the second page, to identify those that are in compliance and any outstanding issues that he would have to follow up with. The other big thing for me was to ensure that the data we receive, and I think Jayce will appreciate this, the data we receive is compatible with other databases in the city. We've had this issue that we've been working on for a couple of years now, in cleaning up data, ensuring that addresses match, that occupancy information matches from one database to the other, and this tool does comply with our current fire inspection software. As far as access and security goes, that is always a question, who has access to the data? We do have access to all the information. The fire equipment dealers only have access to their client base information, and then the building owner at any time can request information on the test that was done on their building. Cost is $10 per system per address, I was asked last time that we were here, and so I gave an example, McDonald's, and I just threw out a random example, but they have a sprinkler system, an alarm system, and then they have a commercial cooking hood system that requires an extinguisher within it. Based on the, the timelines of those tests that need to be done, their entire cost would be $40 if that fire equipment dealer passed the cost on to the business owner, it's all dependent upon their business plan, business model. I mentioned the endorsements currently by the Western Fire Chiefs, the very last page has that endorsement on it. I know I went through this kind of quick, so I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify any issues that you may have. Again, we are looking for an adoption of Compliance Engine as the tool that the city of Meridian will be using to ensure the accurate reporting of these tests being done.
Mark, or Chief, any questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Sorry. If there are no questions, I would move that we approve the presented agreement with Bryce or LLC for use of the Compliance Engine. Mayor to sign, and clerk to attest.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to-
That the resolution?
Approve the resolution on item 9F, which is 15-1057.
You did the agreement.
Yes.
Correct.
That's what I meant to say.
Madam Mayor.
There's two, Madam Mayor, you have the agreement to approve and the resolutions. You have two items.
Oh, the agreement first? Yes.
That's E.
Sorry, the agreement. Sorry about that. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zeromba.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, and nine G.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. Before you is a, an MOU with the Meridian Rural Fire Protection District. This issue was brought to council several months ago, we've been working on that. Bill, I have a question, I want to ask you on any legal questions. MOU. This is an MOU to the original joint powers agreement. Over the years, the district has recognized the need to have certain administrative tasks done, correction, administrative support tasks done specifically for the fire district, and those items are listed in the bullet points on the first page. In consideration of that, the district has agreed to add two thousand dollars to what they pay to the city for providing fire and life safety services to the district. This agreement has been presented to the commissioners, they have approved it, and are prepared to sign upon your signature and approval, and so with that, I would turn over to Mr. Nary on any legal issues with the agreement.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a pretty straightforward agreement, was crafted by the attorney for the district, I have reviewed it, I've discussed it with him. We did re-craft the job description for one of the employees of the fire department to fit all of those administrative tasks and responsibility into that person's job description, so it is covered there in our hierarchy of how the job is to be performed, and then the additional pay commensurate with that has already been taken care of, so really, this is just a cleanup for that process, and then a reimbursement to the city.
This is from council.
I have none.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Seeing no questions, I would move that we approve the MOU between the City of Meridian and Meridian Rural Fire Protection District, as presented, and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Motion and second to approve item nine G. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zeromba.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council, any items for future agendas?
Not this time.
Item eleven is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we go into executive session, Asprey, State Code six, seven, two, three, four, five, one C, one D.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zeromba.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council, any items for future agendas?
Not this time.
Item eleven is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we go into executive session, Asprey, State Code six, seven, two, three, four, five, one C, one D.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.